Yep. All right, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:15. So everyone knows the meeting is being recorded. And we are holding this meeting in accordance with the emergency order 12, which is allowing one of our members to join remotely. And to participate in the meeting while still maintaining public access for everybody to the meeting in accordance with 91A. So we're gonna start the meeting with the public hearing. One second. All right, so public hearing April 14th, 2021 at 6:15, S A U conference room, Hinsdale School Board is holding a public hearing to authorize a withdrawal from the building maintenance expendable trust in the amount of $28,775. So I will take any questions or comments from the public first. So if there is anybody who would like to ask anything, please go ahead and do so. If you're on Zoom, you can either use the chat, we can use the raise hand feature and Ann can call on you. We'll give you a minute. I'm not seeing anything pop up. All right, so if there's nothing from the public, I will close that portion of the hearing and I will open up questions to the board or from the board. Does anybody have anything?
No.
Yeah.
And this is the money that we had in the Warren last year to be expended out for the, I believe it's the floor in the bathroom, S A U's Warren.
Elementary school.
And the elementary school bathroom. Anything from any? All right, so then I will close that portion of the hearing. We don't need a vote or anything on it, right? It's just taking.
We'd need a vote, but you don't have to do it now. But typically boards do right after.
All right, so have a vote to accept?
Yeah, the recommendation to expand the $28,775.
So I'm looking for a motion from the board to accept this expenditure of $28,775 from the building maintenance expendable trust.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Right, motion in a second, any discussion? Julia, did you have anything?
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm gonna try to pay more attention to up there to see you this month, so.
You did fine last time, you did absolutely fine.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. So then we just have two, well, yeah, we have a couple sets of minutes to approve. So I'm looking for a motion, public and non-public minutes of March 10th, 2021, as well as the public minutes for March 31st, 2021.
I will make that motion.
One second.
Right, you have a motion. Is there any discussion or corrections? I have a few corrections.
Yep, I have some.
Okay, you want to go first? You want me to go first or?
I can just look up you.
Okay.
Whatever you want.
All right, so bear with me one second, I gotta go through my notes really quickly. All right, so the small correction on the public minutes for March 10th. So for the yearbook ad, this year, an additional quarter page ad is proposed versus purposed. I've got that one. That's just a very small, minor thing. Then I have on the non-public minutes of March 10th, on the second page, discussion of a personnel matter versus a personal matter. And then there's a bigger one that I need to clarify and have corrected from March 30th, the meeting from March 31st, the public minutes. So it says here that the motion failed and the motion was remade. The motion didn't fail, for lack of a second?
It was, you look at the, I had, I had to go over the tape and you said.
I said, I said, I said the motion would fail if there was no second.
That's my recollection as well.
Yep, the motion would fail if there wasn't a second. So then we had discussion to clarify what we're making the motion on.
Okay.
There was still a delay in getting the second and then even though it's not typical for the chair to make a motion or a second, I did make the motion and explained why. So I offered explanation for that. So the motion did, did pass with a vote of three to one. And I can see where there'd be confusion, but I did, I did specify.
I, I played that over and over and over again.
And that's, that's okay, I just wanted to clear that, that's important because if the motion had failed, Jim couldn't then turn around and make the exact same motion.
Yeah.
And I also want to say it was, I believe, and can look at the recording for that too, because I'm not sure, but I believe that we'd said we were accepting the report versus the actual plan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's a difference there too. So we were accepting the report.
Report of the strategic plan?
Yeah. That's okay.
Report of the curriculum plan.
Yep.
The report, so.
Yeah, just say, just say the report, you have to say the report.
Okay.
And that's all I had. Anyone else?
Yep, I have, I listened to, because, you know, I was sick and missed it, so I listened to it today. So everything you just said is correct for the start of my mind, because I was listening to it this morning. Um, one thing I do have is board members were present and then Julie was remote. I'm not listed at all, so I was excused.
Yep, Holly was excused.
No, that's, that's perfectly fine, that's okay. I was very, I was excused because as I was sick, I texted Sean and was like, there's no way, please excuse me. No, oh, totally, I totally get it, that's fine. And that's all I had.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Okay, so then there's no further discussion. Any, all those in favor of accepting that group of minutes as amended, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. All righty, and now we have the Travis's ELO presentation. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you do whatever you, whatever you do.
All right, so my name's Travis Mees, I'm at New York High School and I do a ELO role. On, I chose an ELO because I'm not really kind of the classroom type of kid. I like to be outside, I like to get nearby. And I fell in love with the world of ELO because I think it was in my freshman year. Or no, my eighth grade year, you guys were first starting to do ELOs and I saw Brandon Stubbs' exhibition and I fell in love with it, fell in love with welding, that whole job. Um, I did it to get the hands-on experience and to get that, that real-world application of the job into the job area. You learning competency as a software designing, because at the trailer place in Winchester, Jason has this thing called cat, cat catalog or something. And he blueprints all the things for his trailers. He first started his business because his dad has a trailer shop in, way up in New York. And he wanted to branch out and kind of do some things. Only myself and like two other guys that do it, it's quite small, but there's, he's got a lot of businesses out there that want his trailers. For my exhibition this year, I would like to build a five-by-eight trailer, kind of like this, this is a six-by-ten for the high school. I think they would find, I was talking with Sean Lee and he would find use in it for building for just extra stuff, so he doesn't have to pick it up on the day, because I guess, he said that now you guys are replacing your own air filters in the school?
Yes.
Um, he said that he went out and grabbed a truckload and not all of them would fit in the pickup. So if you guys had a trailer, it'd be easier to get more, make it a little bit more efficient. Different supply than he has, from going from elementary school to the shed out there and back and give you, if you're useful to have. I recommend ELOs because the hand-on experience is nice. It's, I go over there from about 8:30 to 11:30 every day and I come back from my classes, because I have two English periods. I wish I was there all day, because I love it so much. But it's just, it's nice to branch out. It's nice to know that when I'm no longer senior, I kind of can go with my days as I usually would, I just don't go back to school. So that transition part is a lot easier known. After, so I have, he offered me a full-time job there. And that's just, it's, it makes the transition easier. Being a welder, it's easy to, it's a trade that you can have. And it wouldn't be necessarily going out to college, you'd be going to a trade school to get the certificate that says, you know, I want to do, I can weld, I'm certified in doing this. There's a certification, American Welding Society, they put that out. And the American Welding Society has a bunch of different certificates. You can mid-weld, if that's what I do at the shop. You can TIG weld, which is just with a stick and usually use that on a different aluminum types of metals. And I'd like to kind of go and bang, bang them all out. It's just, it's easier and in the world, it's nice to have that certification that says that I, that it's mine, I can take it anywhere. Yeah, there's a couple videos that I have for you guys that I've used at the school. And I think they're on the flash drive.
Okay. That's my fault, I didn't realize you were.
She might need help with that. Buried under the table.
Don't bang your head.
It's a flash drive, it's on this side, it's on this side. It was, we plugged it in over here.
If it's plugged in, you should be able to just go to the yellow folder thingy and have it pop up.
Okay, which hole?
At the bottom.
Yeah.
The yellow. Sorry. Trailer instruction? Which one?
So it's the welding the size on a trailer, I'll do the next video to kind of explain a little bit of that.
The trailer construction?
Travis, I do a yellow up here, got eight new trailers in Winchester. Welding, they got side rails for all utility stuff. This is the blueprint that I get. It has different frame and everything, but now I'm making them side rails. These are left and right top. So you can't make the same one, it's one more under on top. But he got it set up and made sure they're square and I see they're all pasted now, so we call them up. It's easier to make the pieces separate and then put them all together on the service and make things less time. But yeah, basically, I can, he, he has two different types of needs. He has the utility trailers like these, which are, they range smaller than he actually does. The biggest supplier he has is the tiny house trailers. Like he'll build 16, 17, 18 for tiny house trailers. Ship them to usually young couples, a lot, and they'll put a tiny house on, and live out of it. It's, it's kind of cool. Um, like the sides, he'll have me build sides, gates, fenders, tongs, a little bit of everything. So our name welder Sean, which that's all he does all day. It's easier for him to just grab and put it on the pit, takes less time to make it, like you make the smaller pieces. But at the trailer shop, I get, I know how to weld, I can get it pretty much good, but I want to go to a trade school after to get the like the difference between what gases to use and what certain types of metals, the wire speed, the voltage, like, kind of like the science piece behind it.
Cool. Did anybody have any questions for Travis?
No, but it's great.
Neither of us have a question, so it's, my dad was a welder, so I always loved watching the welding ELOs, I've been to those. And if you, behind you, the article that's framed when we won the Magna Award, that, you know, the picture in there is from him from doing the welding, so, awesome.
Julia, did you have any questions for Travis?
No, I thought it was great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I don't really have a question per se, but I will make a comment, because I think that if, you know, Brandon was here, he would tell you that, you know, what you're doing with the, with the welding is it, it's a pretty lucrative field, you know, you, you, you're all set, you know what I mean?
Yeah, actually, I added him on Facebook and we've been communicating back.
Oh, cool.
Because I wanted to know how he went about it.
Yeah, so you're, you're gonna find that you're gonna have a lot of opportunities, you know, especially as you move forward with like, like you said, the different aspects of it. And you kind of, you know, round that out. You're, you're gonna have a lot of opportunities coming your way. So I, I think you picked a really good, a good ELO to do and that you like it is probably the most important thing, because then you'll, you know, then you'll keep going with it. And I think you'll find yourself kind of all set.
This is because this year we only have a couple, because Aiden has a dozen yellow, I think they're like delicious, and Jason Allen does one electrical, which is, it's nice, he's going to do the same too.
And that's another one too, that, I mean, he, you know, he'll be in demand and, and, you know, yeah, awesome. But you know, obviously I've always loved the ELO program, so it's great to see you guys come in and.
I was talking to Jason's boss, Neil, I guess him and Jason are close friends too. It's kind of like that whole group of tradesmen that kind of stick together, like, you know, do, like, ours, okay, can you weld this up or wire this stuff? It's nice that everybody knows everybody.
That's awesome. And it's good that you're reaching out, networking too, you know, so, so that's gonna be helpful to you as well. Right? Anything else, anybody?
Great.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate you coming in.
You did a good job Travis.
Yeah, you did a real good job.
Have a good day guys.
You too, thank you. Okay, so next up, we have the calendar, the 2020, 21, 22 calendar. Did you want to speak to that?
Usually we get the calendar out earlier, but we were waiting for the Wind Career Center and they just, we adopted a calendar a couple weeks ago. So we tried to line up. So this calendar lines up with the Career Center and has gone, has been vetted by the Hinsdale Federation of Teachers. So it's not very different, it's a day calendar. It's, you know, the count like what we started with this year. And we would need, as some parents are looking ahead, if there was a way to get the approval tonight. You know, that certainly would be a big advantage to folks who are planning out vacation, starting school in particular is a big item for people this year.
Uh, this was the August, August 31st was the first day? Yeah.
This is the same type of calendar you have.
Yep, with the, with the PD days and all that, yep. Does anyone have any questions for Wayne?
So I was wondering, I just want to make sure that wasn't on public before I start talking. We had emails.
Yeah.
That's about the calendar, right?
Yes.
Okay, so did any of that come? Because those, there's not like half-days at all and they had talk, there was discussion.
This is, they're, they're, what happens is we always send this to the union and they send it back to us with suggestions. It's up to you whether the suggestion about the snow day came from an administrator that thought that we should, you know, keep a little bit of remote learning going if we wanted to. I mean, it's something you don't have to approve. So it, it, most of the, the questions that they had were about snow day expectations.
Right, and then the half-days for
that, that, we, I mean, I had to get this out to you.
Right, so I just wanted to clarify that, before we approve this, that we kind of thought about what people had suggested. I thought that we were thinking to keep snow days, snow days.
Right, but when we were talking with the teacher, with the Federation of Teachers, the representatives, right? It was snow days were snow days. I mean, if they want to change it, that's fine, but.
Right.
No, I think they do.
Yeah, that's what I, and then should we meet with them? I don't, I know we need to approve the calendar, but if there's talk about doing any.
Yes, we can approve the calendar and work out these details afterwards.
All right, I just don't want to have to, before we send it to families, I would like, hopefully this year we can make it and keep it and not do too many alterations. Right. So I just wanted to.
Any other questions? I, I just had the same questions on the snow days and stuff, so you already asked my questions. Holly, anything?
Yeah, so, so my question was, was, one was the snow day too. But also the number one, we're, we talked about doing the half, you know, the half, early release Friday. Are we gonna have, you know, I know part of the reason we did that this year was to give time, because they're, they're having student contact earlier in the morning. Is that gonna continue or is it gonna go back to the old way where they, you know, come in and go into the cafeteria in the morning and do all that?
So as I understand, this calendar would be what the calendar would have looked like in 2019 with a few variations. So this is kind of that old model. It's true that we can make some subtle changes or early release or whatever as we go. I think tonight, we can either grapple with that and if you think there's a strong opinion on the board, or we can adopt this. So parents know when the first start day is and when the, you know, the winter holiday and the February break. And then we can look at early release if you want. We'd have to, you know, obviously the board can always go with an hour calendar. This year, we are up against it both, either way.
Right.
Day or hours. So this is, this, you know, couldn't get more minimum than we are right now, but we have good reasons.
So what, so this, I understand, what I think you're saying is so approving the calendar is kind of separate from working out these pieces in the email, which will be worked out between the union and the board later, kind of a thing. The, approving the calendars, we can do that tonight and then during the course of whenever, work out these other details, right?
Yep.
Is that what you're saying?
Part of what I'll be talking about under the S or two recommendations would help solve a maybe some of the problems that led to our need for a February or late afternoon.
Okay.
Early in the year on that, on the Friday afternoons.
Right, Joe, you had something?
Um, you know, kind of in reference to what Holly was speaking to is that, you know, prefer not to have the kids all congregate in the large areas. I don't have the numbers with me tonight, but that's when we saw a lot of, you know, challenging behaviors and Eric Mann has suggested that that's the big transition from home to school. And to make that transition as smooth as possible, I'd like to work with staff, both teachers and parents, to figure out a way to continue to allow the students to go to the classrooms, whether it's supervised by the teachers or not. And I know the contract says that right now, students won't be going into the rooms until 8:35, but we've been under the emergency order. But I would hope that we might be able to work something out, because I do think it's a stronger transition for the kids.
Okay.
So that's a later, plus work out with the union thing and tonight's, okay, yeah.
We would, we would have to, some of us have, we would have to do that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Joe.
Jim, did you have any questions?
No.
Let me just check with Julia. Julia, did you have anything?
No, as long as we're just approving the calendar, I don't know what email that's being referred to or what discussions were happening there, but.
It's in your board.
Oh, okay, so I apologize, yeah, so I think that, as long as it's just the date to the calendar, I'm fine with it.
Okay, Ann?
And I'll just take that snow day thing off.
Okay. Well, I mean, if the teacher, if that's what the teachers want to do, you know, we could, we could talk about that.
Well, you know. I mean.
Let's have, let's have this, have that part as a work in progress.
Okay, so, so we'll just leave it like this, but.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll leave it like this, we'll prove the dates, we'll make it a work in progress and then we'll, we'll tweak what's happening and discuss what's happening and fine tune that, but the dates can still stay the same.
Sooner rather than later, hopefully, just so we can get.
Right. Yeah.
Well, yeah, I don't mean.
Vacation first.
I don't mean like, you know, next Monday, but yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask just one question? I know what we're saying about the dates, but while I'm thinking of it, about the snow day part, and the executive order, you know, you have the question and answers for executive order 89 a little bit later. Um, and I don't know how far that, you know, is in effect, but it affects everything like, or, but they do talk in there about remote hours can no longer be used to me, instructional time unless it's the parent saying that my kid is, I want my kid to be remote. So if we were to have remote snow days, would they even count? So.
This all came all at once.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So we.
So that'd be part of the bigger, yeah.
Yeah.
I just had that note down, so I wanted just to make sure I got that out, so, yeah.
And so, I'd recommend, you know, Caleb, Sean, who've been working with the leadership of HFT.
Yep.
This would be something, because I'm, I'm not sure if the comments that were in your packet reflect the majority or a single person, or, you know, there's just many questions.
Okay.
I think, in, because of the expediency issue here, we're better off just getting it out.
Right, than dealing with all the other stuff after the fact.
Okay.
Okay. All right, anything from anyone else? All right, well, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the calendar as presented.
One second.
All right, motion in the second to accept the 21, 22 calendar as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, so then we have the schedule for year, year-end events. Who's gonna tackle that?
So we have Joe and Ann that would speak to the variation on, just to kind of add information, you know, we're not graduating, some of those kinds of things we've already agreed to, but there is one issue that I need to speak to. When we started looking at our hours for stays, you know, we made some lot of changes. On Fridays, we gave teachers, and they needed it, the planning time, but when we came right down to it, we're gonna be okay with the K-11 with the calendar that we have, but the K, the 12th grade, our seniors are two hours short using an hour model, the 990 hours. And we would like to use those two hours during their senior award day. They're here, it wouldn't be a big, you know, hardship and then they could still graduate, you know, that's.
Okay.
So that'd be the only real variation. Other than that, it's just information.
On the class day, I did meet with HFT to talk about those early release afternoons and we counted hours, counted hours, and first I thought, oh no, we're gonna have to take away all of the Friday afternoons. No, it comes down to just that day. So since there's that two-hour, usually two-hour assembly in the morning, high school students, we have a plan for them to be in the features in the gym spaced apart, visitors and students on the floor that are participating in it. And middle school kids will watch it virtually, will, will have it, go into their classroom so they can watch it. So that two-hour time will go onto the afternoon for everybody as a full day.
Okay, great.
So that's our plan right now and the, and the union thought that was okay.
All right, great. Right? Any other events or anything going on that you want to, guys want to talk about or?
I put all of mine in my board report.
That's what I saw, right.
I'm not sure when we're gonna do the recognition for the girls' basketball team. I'm not sure if we have a date for that yet.
I'm still looking for donations for jackets, so I'm not sure.
Okay. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question just about the gatherings. I've been reviewing some of the newer CDC guidance on it and of course, changes all the time. But we would like to be able to do something for the wall tile project and be able to have the students be able to see the work. It won't, we looked at the spacing and there won't be a way for everybody to congregate at once, but based on like the guidance that they're offering, if we spread it out and had, you know, a sign-in sheet and just families stuck together, then they could come by, get their tile and then also maybe get a picture taken with them by the by the tile project and then go, so they'd enter by the music room and go down the hallway and then out. So we'd like to be able to do that. The other thing that we typically do in May, well, actually in March, is we have our preschool registration. And so far this year, we've been saying no to visitors, but I was wondering if the board had an opinion on allowing visitors like that to come into preschool to be able to conduct those. We do, you know, like make sure they sign in that they're not COVID symptoms and there are no temperature screenings and that kind of thing. And we could probably keep it to less than 10 minutes just to, for each specialist to see them. And then in addition to that would be a kindergarten orientation, which we missed out on last year. I think kindergarten parents would like that. And if possible, I'd even like to do it for the first grade parents coming up on two separate nights. But if we staggered it again, where families, you know, came in and had five minutes and maybe it wouldn't be a, a long dialogue with the teachers, but it would be a chance to at least see the space and get a little bit more comfort and get some handouts on what would be happening in the fall.
Opinions from the board, opinions, thoughts?
Well, one thing about the tile project was that last night's HEF meeting, comment was made that it would be nice to have the kids while they're still at the elementary school get the, you know, get the final closure on the tile project, rather than have them come over from that middle high school, which I think was some logistical issues that happened this year. So would be very beneficial in terms of just logistics of it next year, you know, or at the end of this year, as opposed to trying to push it off to next year. You know, or at the end of this year, as opposed to trying to push it off to next year.
Okay. Holly, anything?
Nope.
Kayla?
Yeah, I think doing it for first grade too would be beneficial if they missed out on it this year. I think it makes parents feel better and I like the idea of getting families back in. I think if we can do it safely, then we definitely should.
All right. Julia, anything?
Nope, that sounds great.
Okay.
I, I agree as much, as, as normal as we can make things the better.
Okay. Wayne, any input?
No, I like it.
Okay. Now, do you need, do you need anything in this, in the form of a motion or we just kind of?
I think Joe, Joe just.
Joe can just, yeah. All right. Yeah. So it sounds like if you can kind of keep people as distant, you know, limited numbers, all of the stuff that you talked about, if you can make that work, then it sounds like nobody has any objection.
All right, so I'll, I'll kind of go through this. I'll make a more formal plan for an outline for the board, for the May board meeting. Because I don't envision doing it until after, I think it's May twelfth when we meet again.
Okay. That sounds good. Uh, do you need anything from us, Wayne, as far as the schedule of year end events, or is that just information?
That was some information I needed to let you know about the two hours we're going to throw in there.
Okay.
Um, and I wanted you to have, you know, you should know, just people ask.
Yep.
Uh, what's happening here.
Yep, absolutely. All right, then are we, is there anything else on that? Are we ready to move on to sports? All right, so we have the proposal concerning spring sports.
Have our athletic.
We do.
So you have, you have the whole, uh, the, yeah. So basically, the only thing I did add, uh, as the masks, uh, I remember when I talked the other day that we were going to wear masks inside and hopefully not outside. Um, we are going to wear masks outside. N H I recommended it. They're going to make it. So that has to happen for tournaments, so we might as well do it. Um, everybody's in agreeance that when they come play, and so they're going to have masks on. Um, I told them that if they don't, um, I think that we do need to be semi-realistic with the masks. Um, it's sometimes eighty degrees.
Mm-hmm.
These masks on these kids' faces.
Yeah.
There's center field, there's three hundred feet away from somebody.
True.
You know, if his mask comes down or he wipes his face, I, I think that we need to kind of be a little bit tolerant of that. Um, you know, the pitcher whipping his head around, his mask is going to come down. You know, he can't stop his pitch in the middle to put his mask back on.
So, um, we did extend the, we looked at the baseball and softball fields.
Um, we did extend the dugouts a little bit so that there's more room, um, so they're not on top of each other. Uh, masks are definitely mandatory in the dugout, so they're not wearing a mask. It's an issue. Uh, each team brings their own baseballs and softballs, so we are not playing with the same ones. So if Sonny P is in the field, they play with Sonny P's baseballs. If Hinsdale's in the field, we play with Hinsdale baseballs. Um, we obviously share a lot of equipment. I think it's pretty unrealistic to ask parents to go buy their kids helmets and bats.
Yeah.
And now you're looking at thousands of dollars. Um, so we do Lysol them in between use. Um, I had the athletic trainer look into that. It is safe. It's okay to put Lysol on helmets and have the kids touch it with their skin. So, um, that's what we've been doing. Uh, we've been rubbing, we've been sanitizing holes after every practice. Uh, in between innings, we've been putting a little bit of hand sanitizer on every ball. I'm not sure if that's even legal or not, but we've been doing it. So we have played two games. Um, I think it's been very, very good. Um, it's great to see the kids playing. The kids are very excited. They missed all last year. Um, we had our first game on Monday. The, uh, the enthusiasm out of the kids was, was really, uh, something to be happy about. Um, you know, there's kids that didn't play since May of two thousand nineteen, two thousand eighteen, whatever it was. Uh, so I, I think that it's a good plan. I think that it's basically goes along with the basketball one besides, you know, I think that we are outside. Um, I think I say it in there that we're outside, you know, fans there, we're going to wear masks, but I'm not going to ask just two people to come. There's a ton of space out there. There's two, two games going on at the same time. A lot of the same kids going on. Um, I don't think the pods are the idea. Uh, we did pods for soccer. Unfortunately, again, parents have kids playing on both teams. Um, so they'll be taking up a pod from somebody else. Um, so, but they are wearing masks. They are socially distancing. Um, and we're just trying to take less stuff at a time.
Anyone have any questions for Sam?
I just have a question about parents going to away games. Are we good to go to away games?
So, so far, I have not heard from anybody in middle school that says we cannot. I think there might be one. I think Manatok is on the fence about it just because of where their field is.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and there feels right on the road, so it's hard for them to social distance, um, and get their home fans, the getaway fans there. So I think Manatok's the only one that's not, um, other than that, I think we're fine. The only thing, um, that I just wanted to make known is, oh, we did go to the scenic on, on Monday. We did, uh, we took a school bus and fit as many kids as we could on the school bus safely. And then all the equipment and stuff I took up to the van, so that we were still safe socially distancing. And, uh, I think that that's the best way to go is we'll take a bus, put whatever the bus company thinks is safe on the bus. And if we have to, we'll have another van. I mean, um, we had, we had thirty kids go on Monday, so we had the twenty-six and then I had four.
That answer all your questions? Holly, any questions?
No.
Jim? Julia, did you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Uh, so my only question, uh, because you had mentioned dugouts and, um, are, are we going to use dugouts or no?
So we're, I'm trying not to, but unfortunately, we're kind of tied in with space over there. Um, because I don't want to take the spot basically from the elementary school. I don't want to make it so that, you know, we're taking up that entire area. Um, so they, they put, the baseball field doesn't have to, the softball field's the one that does. So they just put their belongings in there and then I think they, I believe that they spaced out, out in the, in the open with masks.
Should we take out then the, the line where it says dugouts will not be used?
We can, um, I'm, I'm really trying to, but.
Yeah, but you know, if you, if we take it out, then you can still try not to, but you have the option to do it.
Yeah.
So, you know, for me, I would rather take it out, knowing that you're not going to try not to than to say dugouts won't be used and then you may use them. I, I think it's cleaner personally.
Okay.
It's only a little, it's a minor.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah. All right. All right, so we already approved the program, so we don't really have to do any approval on this, or do we?
Well, you don't have to, but you could approve the recommendations made by the A D as amended.
Okay. Okay, so I'd be looking for that motion.
Yes, I'll make the motion to accept that.
Right, motion in a second, uh, to accept the recommendation of the A D as amended. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Right, motion carries. All right, thank you. Good luck.
I will, I will revise the schedule, so it's, I'm trying to find middle school a couple more games. They only got six right now. Um, so I'm trying to find a couple more. Um, middle school, I was surprised you said this earlier in this proposal, middle school is going to play.
Okay.
I think it's important to try and get them back into competition against other kids. Um, it's also hard when you only have seventeen kids to play an annual thing when you need nine on field at a time. Uh, so they, they are playing the same schools as of right now at high school. So they, we play the scenic, which is in the whips, which they play, boy, middle school, which is in the whips, which we play. Manatok, they play Manatok, Keen, Keen. Um, there is going to be a couple of changes with them as they're going to play West Maland um, in Winchester to try and get some more games, but they are traveling. They are playing the same towns that we are going to.
Great. All right. An- anything from anyone else on sports? No? All right, cool. Thanks, Sam. Alrighty, so let's see, what is next up on the agenda? Um, selection of search committee for a business administrator.
We have a, a page that references the makeup, and this is from your manual. Uh, so the general chair, a committee dealing with the business administrator search and with the, uh, student services, director of student services search, but we would need a makeup. And I think, um, Anne, you might, I, I think we have community folks that are already.
Okay. Okay.
But I have a couple people run.
All right. Uh, so let's do this one first and then we'll move on to, uh, director of student services. And then you can, uh, throw your suggestions out then. Is that okay?
Yeah, I haven't talked to these people about it, but I think they would be very good at it.
Okay. All right, so can how volunteer to be the budget committee rep? So everyone knows, and you've got that in your board packet. So then we have, what, three community members? And we need two?
Yeah.
All right, did anybody have any thoughts on the three letters that we got and who you would like?
That was super fantastic that someone moving into town is so motivated and interested and volunteering. His enthusiasm is exciting.
So I, I agree, and I suspect that we'll be hearing more from him. I think my, my only, and I, I think his background is good, so I think he would be really good. My only concern is, um, that we have it for, you know, community members. And even though he is going to be a community member really soon, he's not yet. And we have two other ones that are community members now. Do you know what I mean?
Can we approve three? Can you have more?
It should be two.
Really?
Yeah.
You have to change your manual.
Wow, well, that's a bummer.
So that's my, I, I mean, that's my only thing, and I know it's a very minor sticking point.
No, I think Sean's point is, well, take.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I would agree.
I really hate killing his enthusiasm.
We'll find other things for him to do.
Can we suggest he be on a different committee if we need people for it?
So, so here's the thing, you know, we have other committees that are going to be coming up. And there's nothing saying that, because he's going to be here really soon.
Right.
There's nothing saying doubt to him.
Right.
Afterwards, because someone who, you know, is just moving in and showing that level of interest, I don't want to.
No.
I don't want to diss him. I don't want to like just ignore him, but.
Right.
Um, so I, so I would say, you know, you know, I don't want to keep him on file, but, but seriously, do reach out when we have other, you know, other committees.
Yep.
Those are my thoughts, and I mean, again, it's up to everybody, not just me, so.
I agree.
Okay. So then that would leave us with, uh, with Jay and Anna. Is everybody good with them?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, do you need that, that in a motion, Wayne?
Once we have the whole list, I thought I would bring it to you.
Okay.
May meeting with a recommendation for a first meeting.
Okay, perfect.
Set that up, that's all right.
All right, so, um, we're looking at.
You want to have the board members?
Yeah, I want, I want, I want the board members to commit tonight. I think we need to do that.
And, uh, Joe, I think I asked you about, yeah, I'm new to it, and, uh, Anne, I think I asked you about.
I would be interested in doing the business.
Business administrator?
I'm still, right.
I think it's, it's in line with, with my experience.
Yep. So is everybody good with Holly and Julia?
Yeah, I was going to say, just because I've been the budget committee rep, and I was also, for what it's worth, it was a while ago, but I was on the last business administrator search committee when we were with S A U thirty-eight, so that was forever ago, but still.
Jimmy, you okay with that?
Sure.
You're okay with that?
Yep.
I'm perfectly one hundred percent fine with that.
I want nothing to do with.
Are you sure?
And I have no interest in being on this business one, which.
Okay. All right, so the board members for that committee will be Julia and Holly. Is there anything else we need to do with that one, Wayne, or, or can we do the student services?
Bring the, you know, final recommendation. Yeah, so we'll have to get.
So you'll find a teacher?
Yeah.
Yeah, so did you, or you sent out an email and asked for a volunteer and then, okay.
And then we'll.
Bring that.
Bring it to you and probably in non-public if there's more than one.
Okay.
And I will, um, I will notify the applicants that we will be.
Who's the administrator? I'm sorry, I apologize. Do we, do we have the administrator for the business administrator?
Okay.
There it says prin- principal and an administrator.
The administrator.
Okay, so Wayne's going to, okay.
That'll be the chair.
Okay. And, and did you say Joe was the principal and Joe?
Joe.
All right, cool.
All right, are we good on that one then? All right, so then we need to, uh, discuss the selection of the search committee for director of special services. Um, so let's talk about community members in a minute. Who, who from the board wants to do that? Kayla?
Yeah, I'll be the other member, sure.
All right, so Kayla and Jim, Julia, you, are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Oh, you're all right with that?
Yep.
That splits it up, right?
Yeah. All right, so Kayla and Jim will be on that one. And Anne, do you want to talk about your suggestions or do you want to contact them first? What do you want to do?
Talk with them first.
Yeah, why don't you talk with them first and see if they're interested?
Do you have two people in mind? Because if you didn't, that other person who wanted to do the business.
I think special.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. To talk, talk to the people that you're thinking of and, um, and see if they're interested.
Both of these people are, and I think it would be, um.
Okay. All right, yes, see if they're interested and then we can, and if you have more, then we can, you know, review it and decide.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, that, that works. Okay.
So do we need?
I'll go out with the email for a teacher for each of these committees now.
Okay. We need a principal and an administrator through that, right?
Anne, you're doing that one, right?
Yeah.
Good, all right, perfect. All right, perfect. So then we'll put that together and we'll have the, the, we're voting in May.
Yeah. Late May is when you just.
Yeah, I, I get no doubt.
Okay, so we got that taken care of, and now we have the discussion of the S R two funds.
So, as you know, uh, the, we had the eight hundred fifty-seven thousand something that came out of the, uh, uh, the stimulus money from the December.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and we found out, uh, a few weeks ago that we would have two million forty-five thousand out of the S R three, which is, uh, uh, money out of the American Rescue Plan. So we have the Recovery Act and the Rescue Plan. Uh, we're not talking about the Rescue Plan, although that money will be released to us at the end of May. We're just talking about the S R two, uh, money. And what we'd like to do, like to kind of go through the overarching, um, places where we would like the authorization to spend up to and know that we get a report out frequently to you and know that, uh, you know, there may be some changes. We can rewrite these grants all the time, but we need to be able to write a grant that has kind of your okay. Then it has to be approved by the D O E, then we can begin to expand and report. And it gets really complicated, but the sooner we can make that happen, the better off we are with some of these expenditures. So I also want you to just be aware of the provision, uh, for the maintenance of effort and equity. So when the feds came through with this money, they knew that states may say, ah, well, listen, they, you know, it's got to fix that house, let's cut that. Uh, and, and they can, because it's built into the, into those plans. So the effort is states and districts must continue to fund public elementary and secondary education and higher education, at least at the proportional levels as the average annual funding over the fiscal years twenty seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. So it's the same proportion, can't go below that average. But for us, it's more about the equity, which is the other side of this. In twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, so the next two budget years, high need school districts are protected from state spending reductions in two ways. First, state per pupil funding for the neediest half of the districts cannot be reduced by the amount that exceeds the overall decrease in state funds. And second, and this is the one that's probably most important, the Hinsdale, per pupil state funding for the twenty percent of districts with the highest percentage of economically disadvantaged students may not be reduced below pre-pandemic levels, which is F Y twenty nineteen. So, uh, Hinsdale is thirty-one out of a hundred ninety-one districts, so we're below that. We're in that twenty, we're actually in sixteen.
Oh.
So there's a lot of protection built in, and I know you've heard a lot of things about the state budget, but when the dust settles, um, there's a lot of protection built into this stimulus money, and the state's already taken it, so I don't think that would be a big worry. So here are the areas that we're talking about. In special education, compensatory special ed, about thirty thousand. And Sean, I don't know if you want me to just go through them all and then quest, take questions?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I think.
Yeah.
So just if you have a question, then we have the people on that can answer them in greater detail.
Perfect.
So the thirty thousand compensatory ed, and that's the learning gaps, you know, based on built, on the data that we have.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, transportation for those kids needing compensatory ed, that's some, you know, that's a law, we've got to do it. Uh, there is thirty-five thousand for a light skills para who would be attached or would go with a light skill kid who is involved with an E L O. So the light skill kids would need a para with them when they did that, but that person would be paid to do that, and it would only be for that E L O. We're trying to keep, make sure there's no funding cliff. And when the grant money comes leaves in twenty twenty-four for the S R three and twenty twenty-three for the S R two, that you're not stuck with, uh, wait, you're not gonna let this person go away. We're trying to avoid that, we're trying to create efficiency, so in reality, you know, there may be some realization savings.
Yeah, I think that needs to be a priority behind everything that you're looking at, yep.
So, uh, that would be thirty-five thousand, and there's a Chesco tuition of fifty thousand for one year, and that is the vocational program for, uh, highly involved students in, in Key. So it's like a little out of district, but it fits because we've got this issue around compensatory ed and trying to make these kids whole. So the total for special ed would be a hundred thirty-five thousand, we'd ask, uh, we'd write that into grant, those four areas, we would draw those areas from the grant and the, and then we'd report out frequently, but that would be the ceiling. And obviously, we'd have, just like your budget now, if we go over there. Uh, professional development, we have twenty-five thousand, uh, for teacher and para P D. Uh, Cat had built that in, uh, and technology, Debbie has built in, uh, ninety-four student, um, laptops, grades K one, forty-three pairs, so all the pairs would get laptops. Twenty-nine, uh, for teachers, counselors, and administrators who have laptops. These are about three hundred and seventy-five dollars each.
Okay.
So that would be a total of sixty-three thousand five twenty-five. Document cameras, thirty-nine document cameras, which are really quite the technology, if you have a smart board to use. And it was thirty-nine, we totaled four thousand thirty-seven. Three smart boards at twenty-one thousand four forty-four, and of course, these items are gonna be in big demand and they'll be going up fast because every district in America has more money than they thought they'd have. Three printers at five hundred fifty dollars, so they're sixteen fifty. Uh, laptop cases, uh, two hundred and twelve at forty-five bucks a piece, so that kid drops the laptop and accidentally hits it. Uh, they would be protected, that's nine thousand five hundred forty dollars. Off-site backup, you all heard about, you know, all the cybersecurity stuff.
Yep.
They're, I mean, just all take tests and do it for us last week. So backup of servers, which would be six thousand. So to back up our servers, so that we couldn't be, uh, we wouldn't lose something if there was like a ransom where, you know, we're not gonna let you look at it and say, oh, it's okay. Total technology would be a hundred and six thousand, a hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-eight cents, so that's what would be, that would be the ceiling. Uh, then Cat has instructional materials and related P D, uh, which includes, uh, K E L A instructional materials at six, up to sixty-five thousand. And COVID, um, stipends for E L A, uh, teachers at about ten hours a piece, or twelve of them at three thousand eight hundred seventy. So that total is sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy. Then we have summer instruction for makeup, uh, learning, and that's thirty thousand per school. And that would be enough to, if we get all the kids that we think we might get. Uh, so the two schools would be sixty thousand total, thirty thousand a school. Uh, nine copiers, we have ten copiers, nine of which are hardly functioning or not functioning because of all of the remote learning extra load.
Only night time I'm at on a Friday.
So that's eighty-eight thousand, uh, and Tom has negotiated a good deal on that, and we're confident that we could go, probably wanna get this going as quick as you can. Personnel expenditures, we're looking at two long-term subs for next year, that one for each building that could help teachers when they were, when they might wanna do some P D and be a little bit of relief. Um, and also, if there was a time when the principal had the sub, maybe there would be something, somebody would be there to get to know the kids, would be part of a beginning year contract, it'd only be COVID stuff, not a long-term deal, one-year contract. An increase in subpay, which we've, we've done as a result of the COVID this year, and it would continue to be paid for then next year out of the S R money. This year was out of CARES money. That would be twenty-five thousand five hundred for the sub. Social worker para, and this would be somebody to work with Sarah at the elementary school for a couple of things. You know, the, the amount of paperwork that she's going through per day right now is amazing, especially given our behavioral support system that we're trying to implement with our airman work. And also, Sarah needs someone with her when she goes and visits homes that are, where kids are really struggling. And so this person would go with them, and the total is for next year would be ten thousand, uh, four hundred. This would be a part-time COVID-related para. Um, they, we'd have a consultant, Karen Craig, you remember Karen, she's willing to manage the grant. Uh, so this for next year would be about thirteen thousand, that would just be a high-end guess, hopefully it'd be less, but. So she would be able to write all the reports that the feds asked, that she'd be able to track all, make sure they're in the right place. And I do believe it would save the district more than whatever it would cost to have her run it, because we don't have anybody at that kinda time right now uh, to do it. And what happens is then the money gets misappropriated, we might end up in the district, out of district money instead of S R money, and, you know, I don't think we can afford that. So that's something we'd recommend, and then she could get started as soon as you say with that, and that's just a consultant, that's not an employee. Uh, and then we would go out, and I know we're, we're looking at some people who could do the accounting part. Um, Tom has recommended the business administrators association at the state, so it'd just be, we need three hours of this, you know, we need five hours of this. Instead of an employee, someone just to do this, or, and there's, between the two brands, there's about three million dollars.
Yep.
And the amount of expectation that you have around justification for expenditures is much less than what the feds have. We've gotta show that we need all of their protected class, all the hiring protocols, all the way in which we're extending that fit their, their expectations. So that would be, oh, then the facilities, one more. Uh, facilities, supplies, and equipment to minimize the spread of pathogens, which is a direct category, and that totals a hundred nineteen thousand eight fifty-eight. And that includes, uh, for, by the way, we're gonna go over this facility on Friday, but I think we're pretty close with this stuff. Sanitation wipes, fourteen thousand nine hundred, sanitation spray, two thousand eight hundred twenty, Clorox, three hundred and sixty fogging solution, two thousand four hundred, paper towels, twenty-two thousand. Uh, COVID, um, custodian, which we paid out of part-time, we paid out of CARES money, but now CARES money is right up to the ability of S R two money, if you're okay with that. That's part-time to wipe down everything and keep it all clean.
Yep.
Disinfected. New heat wheels for the Hinsdale Elementary School, and that just makes the system more efficient because it recirculates the heat, so there's less loss. Uh, upgrade to, uh, automation system, right now we pay a lot of money to Johnson Controls to come in and troubleshoot, and it's been that way, every district, every school, everyone's hit the same problem. But Sean has a, he has the expertise, and with this expenditure, uh, even till, in three years, we'll save this amount. And that's twenty-eight thousand five hundred. New fogging machines, four thousand. Extra cost because the Merv eleven filters are more expensive than the old stuff we had, air handling, that's two thousand five hundred. Portable storage unit, twenty-five hundred, touchless toilet fixtures, twelve thousand two hundred, and touchless paper towel dispensers, twelve hundred fifty. So that's the total, and all of those total, uh, seven fifty-four, and remember, that's an up to, which would leave us a hundred and three, six, seventeen in that. S R two, and that doesn't, we haven't even started talking about S R three, that'd be something we'd bring to the board. And S R three has a few more requirements. We'd have to do, uh, a public hearing with the S R three expenditure, which we could do just prior to a board meeting like you just did tonight.
Yep.
But we'd have to take any questions as part of the protocol of, you know, a two million dollar grant.
Right, right.
You would expect there'd be some expectation.
Right.
So I don't know if you have any questions individually, in which case the people here could, that are online would be able to answer, or if you're okay with that kind of general ballpark, in which case we'll kinda get things rolling, probably not next week, but as soon as we can, we get.
All right, let's, uh, Julia, I'm gonna give you first shot at questions this round.
Well, thank you, but Wayne did a fabulous job of explaining it.
All right, Jim, anything?
Yeah, um, on the storage units, so we have some now that we had a long-term rental deal with, that'll expire, I think, it's beginning of next year. So always saying that we'll buy those as opposed to extending to lease? Or are we talking about getting an additional storage unit?
That's what I understand. Sean's working on his house right now, but he will, if Ann texts him, he will get.
It's, it's to, to keep those units because we don't have space in the buildings.
Yeah, right. So we're not talking about adding another one?
Yeah.
No, okay.
So what we'd be doing is obviously reducing our rental charge.
Yep.
Yeah. And then I just had a concern with the problems we had getting the laptops this year. Like, what does that mean about buying more laptops for next year? I mean, we'll be talking about, you know, twenty twenty-three.
The number one reason I wanted to get this before you today is because there are a lot of district lineups too.
Right, so I'm just concerned that if we go to the same company, we're gonna have the same problem, we're talking about it for nine to ten months, looking, wondering where they are.
Could I ask, okay.
Yeah, absolutely, please, yep. She's probably pulling her hair going, oh my god, we're talking about this again.
Oh my god, we're talking about this again.
I knew it.
Remember, we got the laptops, you were all excited when we got them. Because I went with a different brand. And that's what we've decided, we're not gonna stick with that, that model. We went to the Acer, uh, laptops that don't have touchscreens, and they seem to have a better supply of those. But, you know, toilet paper is in huge supply now too. Things have caught up, um, during the pandemic, but I agree with Wayne with Wayne that with all this money the feds are sending our way, um, there is, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be in competition. I don't care who, who we buy it from, people are gonna, the districts are gonna be buying more technology. So the faster we can get money, the better off we'll be.
So is the intent to buy it from the same company that we did last time, or is, are we throwing it out to other companies?
Nope, I'm buying from, it, it had nothing to do with the company, we were buying it from, um, Jim, I, I don't know if you recall, the issue had to do with a, um, Border Patrol, um, that, um, the devices we were purchased were confiscated by Border Patrol because of, uh, potential, um, child labor issues in China. And I, I'm sorry, but most of the technology comes out of China, that's just the way it is. You know, there, there, there are automobiles that are tough to get because there's a chip shortage right now. So it, it doesn't really matter what company we go with, it's going to be, you know, i- it's a supply and demand kind of issue. So, um, I, I can get you laptops, um, more quickly, but you're gonna pay three times as much money for them. It's a price point, that's what it is, schools go out.
I guess my point is, what good is paying a third of the price for the laptop if they don't show up for ten times the amount of time you might have to wait for the higher-priced ones?
Well, I guess part of it is our district didn't, you know, we didn't have enough money to, to, to manage that.
Yeah, but the money here is not the issue, here is, my, my concern is not so much the cost as the, the potential lead time where it doesn't help us out next year because we're waiting, you know, and
Unfortunately.
A long, we have a long lead time for those things to arrive.
E- even with the, uh, say, thousand-dollar ones, and, and we were buying, um, thousand-dollar ones for the Title I program. Um, even those had problems at times. So I, all I can do is say, we're gonna do the best we can do to get what we can get at the price points we can get. Um, you know, we want to have you all approve what we're, we're trying to do here so that the grant can be written and the money can be, start being allocated, and, um, we can start getting P O's out.
Julia, you got something?
I'll leave right now.
I was just gonna say, based on, on personal experience, right now, even the, uh, the thousand-dollar laptops, um, are not, are, we were to get, we, we ordered some staff laptops that were to arrive the middle of March, current at ETA is April twenty-seventh. Um, so even prior to the schools and everything, there's, uh, there's apparently some glass issues with the laptops. But, um, they're already, just for like ordering, you know, a couple, uh, we're already looking at very extended lead times for, for laptop computers right now. So I would suggest that we let them, my recommendation would certainly.
Let them get their orders in now.
Let them get their orders in ASAP, right? And, and start with, with the model that you want and the price point that's ideal. And then if that becomes an issue, then we can revisit if we need to spend more money or change an order, cancel an order, order something else, but get the process started.
That makes sense to me too. Jim, anything else? No, Holly?
Nope, I agree that Wayne was pretty thorough, just, I just wanna thank them, everybody for all the, the A team and whoever else was involved in all of this work. And, and one thing, I just, I'm, I'm glad to see her that we are using some of the funds to bring a few people in part-time to help manage the grants and do the account, help with the accounting, because there's a whole lot of extra stuff on our plates.
Yep.
When we're already stretched.
Well, and I think, you know, Holly and I had the advantage of being here on Friday with Tom and a couple of members of the budget committee. And so we got a little bit of a preview from Tom as far as some of the accounting challenges that I know I really, honestly, I didn't even think about, and I don't know if you did either.
No, not really.
When, you know, he was kinda laying it out, it's like, oh, okay. Yeah, so I'm, so I'm glad that's worked in there.
Yeah, Sean and I at the same time looked at each other and went, we can hire a few people out of this money, right? Because that's what we, yeah, so.
Kayla, anything?
Um, so my questions were just sort of like, overall, in general, are we sure that all of this is approved and is going to meet grant expectations? There were a couple of things that I was like, hmm. I wondered if that would be covered under, I don't know how strict S R two, I haven't seen the regulations that go along with it.
So I, I did include in my report, I listed, uh, major components in the technical language.
Right.
And from what I'm told at this point, uh, that the, that there's a lot of flexibility. It's more about getting the money out, uh, in here some areas, and I know by, uh, school districts will pay, will account, uh, using Gatsby standards and they're gonna, you know, do something crazy. Uh, school districts are gonna hire using, um, you know, title, protected class status. Uh, so there's gonna be a lot of protection, but also I think people are acknowledging the hit that schools had, the learning loss uh, this year, so they're not trying to make it hard. But once we write the grant, and I, and we'll have Karen, um, and, you know, Cat will, I'm sure there'll be some transition here. Cause Cat's working on, did the CARES one and the, the grant in December around P P E. Uh, she's also moving into Title I, so I mean, it's a lot of complicated, you know, pieces to this. So if, if Karen comes in, she's done a lot of grant writing, she was, you know, did all her P D grant writing, all her Title IV stuff last year. And a year, a few years before that, so she, she will then start the process and submit it. The D O E can say, yeah, try resubmitting that, and they usually do. Now, or give us more justification than you did, we'll put some justification, everything grant has, here's why we're doing it. But it's not a, it's not like, uh, Rocket, you know, exact, you know, this, uh, where everything has to be perfect. Uh, it has to meet the tenor of this language, which is fairly broad. And all of this, in my mind, does, but I may be surprised. And, you know, the copiers was one that you'd say, well, I was, well, in reality.
Those packets.
We're both learning, burned up our copiers, and it's a direct hit.
Yep, I've actually heard that from a lot of the teachers, but copiers are driving everyone crazy. I think that is definitely, we can justify that.
But when you have nine out of ten go down.
Right, and you have to get all these packets out, and parents want them now.
Right.
And right now, I mean, we have teachers that, I can't even imagine the frustration. Uh, and I know we had one, a staff member, uh, because the copy folks are probably getting called too frequently and, uh, they needed a drum change today, and then told, change it yourself. You know, I get it.
Really?
Not the combination we're gonna be working with, but, uh, going forward, but it's.
I can see it though, I can see it happen.
Oh my goodness.
You know, but in this case, pretty confident that what we have here will be okay, we might have tweaked some language. I think it'll be good. The state doesn't want to have to go back and forth too many times, they'll give us guidance if we need it, and I'll let you know every month.
All right, anything else for Wayne, anybody? No, all right, so Wayne, how do you need, uh, how do you need this motion word, or what do you need included in it?
Well, if you could just approve, um, the. Well, if you could just approve, um, the the over arching, uh, amounts, areas of that I targeted. You know, to go forward, that's all I need. And if we ever go above any of those, let you know. And each month I'll let you know where we didn't, where it didn't work or where it did. And the state certainly has, they're the ones, they have the money in their account, but it's under our name. And as long as we meet the requirements, they're gonna want us shipping it out. They don't have the staff, you know, to accounting.
Okay.
Stream on this.
So would it be good to make the motion for, uh, and I'm not making the motion, just trying to word it. Um, to make the motion to approve the superintendent's proposal for the guidelines of the expenditure of the S R two funds? That would work? All right. So I'm looking for that, looking for that motion. Julia, you made the motion.
Don't move. Yeah.
Right. Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right. So now we have a discussion of the task force regarding the strategic plan.
So we talked about names, we talked about categories. Uh, and I think I I put those in my report, and I don't care if you had those in your report. Okay, so then, uh, we had already agreed at the meeting in March, but what I need from you are the two board members that would want to serve on this task force. And I think, Kat, you have an idea around facilitating.
Right. One of the things I was suggesting is that we, or the board consider hiring, facilitating from NHLI, but also by P P R group. And having someone familiar with the difference, you can make sure that the meetings are supported and that they're productive. I think that would be a good use of some of these S R funds that we're going to be receiving.
And then we had in the under curriculum instruction, uh, the two board members that we need. We said Director of Personalized Learning, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. The the principal at Hinsdale Elementary School, teacher at Hinsdale Elementary School, uh, teacher at Hinsdale Middle High School, Reading Specialist, Hinsdale Middle High School Principal or Assistant Principal, Special Education Administrator, and Library Media Specialist. That's what we talked about. So if you're still okay with that, then I would need the two more. And off the ground, it's definitely right away.
Yep.
At like.
So are we still gonna have the final say on some of these on on?
Yes.
Okay.
So I would do the same thing I'm doing with the committee as far as the teacher from, we'll put something out.
Okay.
And we'll bring a list of those from elementary school and those from Hinsdale Middle High School. We'll talk about them. And then hopefully after our May meeting, we can start to, this is, obviously, there's money to help assist with this process. But we haven't even started. And right now, everybody's overwhelmed, so I don't want to add any, anything to the plate in May on this one. We want to at least have the group together. We can start giving them some information and and at least begin the process of looking ahead at maybe a calendar that they possibly need a couple of times in the summer.
Okay. Right. So as far as, um, board members are concerned for this one, I will say that I I do have an interest in this one. Who else has an interest in doing this one?
I have.
You do? Julia, you?
I think that that is a logical choice for both of you to be the representatives personally.
Oh, you're okay with that? Jim, are you all right with that?
Sure.
Yeah. All right. So it looks like Holly and I will do it.
Kayla.
Kayla and I will do it. Sorry.
I don't want to do it.
It looks like we're gonna force Holly to, no, so Kayla and I, I apologize. Sorry. Um, all right.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Um, and not about the task force, but I I have, you know, I was ill when we had that meeting two weeks ago. And so I listened to it today, so it would be fresh in my mind. And at one point, we were saying that whether we, you know, because Kat had given us more information, which, thank you, Anne, had passed that on on to to Julie and I. Um, so I just have one or two questions. The the meeting was great. I mean, I I I felt bad because I was sick, but also felt bad that I missed it because it was a really great meeting to at least watch. Um, but I had a few questions. I don't know when that would fall in.
Let's do it on their other business.
Okay.
Is that, is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, I just, I just, you know, while we were on this.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. I think other business would work for that.
All right, cool.
Okay, are we ready to move on to the COVID nineteen discussion?
Like the nurses' letter and.
Looks like all this, yeah, all of this stuff.
You have to understand that the nurse's letter came in before the governor's order.
Right. Yeah, I saw it was April first.
Yeah, so we're we're under the executive order of the governor. You know, we're fairly, actually, it's not a big, any big changes for us, but there are some recommendations. We're still in, you know, we're like eleven new cases a day average over the last fourteen days, and we're like one point six percent positivity. But there are a lot of Cheshire County folks running around with COVID. Doubt about that. But the quarantine piece is something we can afford, so, um, we're not, you know, we're not doing that. We can't enforce it. We can continue, as I read the governor's order, with our two days. If middle high school, if there's a positive case, and or the same model that that we have at the elementary, we're a class. And of course, always we do the contact rates. So I don't think the board needs to make any action. The nurses wanted you to know that they were concerned that there may be some people who may not be forthright uh, in regards to travel plans in April.
Sure.
And at this point, it doesn't matter if they're forthright or not.
Yep.
Right.
We hope it was good, you know, that they're very careful and that we've expressed, and they believe in regards to the importance of wearing a mask and all of that. And I don't personally know anybody going anywhere, but.
Oh, I do.
I do. Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Some people are already where they're gonna be.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll, you know, we'll hopefully, everybody will be coming. At this point, it's not that, Cheshire County isn't the hotspot right now. We were two weeks ago. We might be next week. And I think if you go to any other state, you'll find counties and municipalities that are, wouldn't want to go to Michigan, for example. I mean, some places that are really out off charts, and there are a lot of places that are better than we are in that state. And at one time, New England was the, you know, best place to be.
Yep.
So I don't know if it's, it's, I I don't want to certainly take on the governor's ability to throw out an executive order. I know we could have filed for waiver, but we didn't need to.
No, we didn't. Yeah.
So for us, I think we should stay the course.
Yeah. And it's way too late at this point.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Karen, Karen Thompson asked if she could speak to remote learning for next year.
Of course.
Go ahead, Karen.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to, um, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Yep.
I just wanted to, um, get the board's thoughts on, uh, when we should start messaging to families. What next year is going to look like? It's my opinion. It it it's my suggestion that we do that sooner than later. Um, and I know that seems like a little crazy right now, but I I feel like there's a lot of discussion happening. And I'm hearing a lot of kids saying and asking, um, will I still be able to be remote next year? And my suggestion is that, um, you know, we bring kids back. And if we continue to offer, you know, it's been, it's been very difficult on our teachers to do it the way we've been doing it. And although they've done a superb job, they're tired. And, um, giving this, everybody's getting vaccinated, and I feel like there's gonna be a much better plate. We're all gonna be in a much better place. When school starts back up in August. So I would like the board's thoughts on what to message and when we can start messaging that. And it's my suggestion that the sooner the better. So families can start thinking about what it's gonna look like next year for them a- as we return back to a normal setting, if that's what we're going to do.
Opinions?
Well, my question is, and I agree with you, but my only question is, with this emergency order eighty nine. And I'm not sure because I I read through this, but there's a lot of these question to answers here to it that I might have missed it. But, um, do we have to offer remote learning still?
We have to offer if it's an accommodation for medical reasons.
For 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 a student. I I know there's no accommodations anymore for adults.
Right.
But for students. Okay.
So the student applied for an accommodation because of a medical issue that would preclude them from being around other kids. Uh, and that should probably be a very small list. But wouldn't be the teacher teaching both the remote class and, because I totally agree with Karen, that that was way above.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's a big ask.
That was a huge ask. They pulled it off.
Yeah.
Which is a mark.
I think Julia.
Julia, yep, Julia?
Um, I, my, on first thought, I completely understand what you're saying, Karen, about like, people want to know. And it's been such a challenge to get information out in a timely manner over the last year. When do you say something? When do you say too much? When do you not say enough? I feel like it, for me personally, feels like if we were to make a statement about what next year's gonna look like now in April. How do we know? How how all of a sudden do we have a crystal ball that that nobody else can yet determine what September or August is gonna look for? I feel like it's, personally, I feel like it's worse to make a statement and then have to retract it rather than do as we've been doing diligently for last year and say, you know, we're really keeping up with the trends. We're trying to keep you as informed as possible. But to go ahead now and say, we're back full bore in 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 August and September, which I think everybody in this room, and that is our hope and our dream, that that happens. But to make that bold of a statement, when right now there's so many balls still up in the air and so many professionals and super smart people that are, they don't know what's gonna look like in two months, let alone in five months. I just feel like making that kind of statement and then having to backpedal isn't a good look.
Yep. Kayla?
Uh, I think maybe we could say something along the lines of, it is our goal.
Oh, absolutely.
We're hoping, just so parents know where, if that is how the board feels, that's the direction we want to go in. Let families know kind of where we are at. Obviously, doing something like that, it can change, just like every step of the way, how things have been. But I think letting families know what direction we want to head in would be, maybe put some people at ease or put them in planning, you know, however they're gonna handle that. If it would be beneficial to know sooner where we would like to go.
Holly?
Um, I agree with Julia. I think it's still early. It's only April. Um, and when I, during the N H S B A report out, I was gonna talk about some Board of Directors stuff. And we have two webinars coming up in May about, like, there's one about, you know, how reopening and everything went this year. And then the second one is about, um, looking ahead to the fall. And what, you know, they're getting different perspectives from different districts and and a whole bunch of other people, and I'll talk about it later. But so it might be interesting to see what all that conversation is across the state. At that point, it's in mid-May, like before, it's before our May meeting, I think. But, you know, it might be interesting to get get that information, too, and see what other people are thinking. But, yeah.
Jim?
Uh, well, I think that the the stuff is coming out from any S B A, we should wait and and try to factor that into our comments.
And I pretty much agree with everything that I'm hearing. I I think Karen makes a really good point that we should let parents know as soon as we can. But I agree with what you guys are saying as far as, yeah, do that, but let's know what that is first. You know what I mean? And let's really have a good idea. And I also want to hear from administration as far as what do you think, what do you really think it's gonna look like? You know, and then take into consideration all these other sources that we're talking about. Um, but then as soon as we have that, not really delaying and then crafting that message and getting that out is kind of where I'm at. Does that make sense? Okay. Does that kind of answer your question, Karen?
Yes, that's fine. I I'm fine either way. I just feel like the the questions are starting to come, and the comments are are definitely there from students around their thoughts on what they're going to do next year. And I'm just letting them know that, you know, that that there'll be some statements made and some decisions made as we move through, but we don't know what that is yet.
Right.
And also for the teachers to hear that the way they're doing it now
Yep.
possibly may not be the way we have to do it next year.
Right.
So I I I think, and anybody can disagree with me or chime in whenever you want. But I think that when we looked at the reopening plan, um, you know, a lot of people got together over the summer and looked at that. And we were waiting for a lot of that guidance that was really, really came to us last minute and then, and then not really as hopeful as we had thought. So when we were looking at that, I think, um, messaging went out probably seemingly last minute, you know.
Well, and it was last.
It was last minute, but that was because of the constraints that were put upon us.
Right.
And my impression is, and and, I mean, Wayne, you'd probably know better than anybody. My impression is that we might not have that same circumstance for this year, so that we might be able to make some decisions sooner as opposed to last year. You know, so, because, yeah, because last year was, everyone's like, oh, my God, what are we doing? What are we doing? Like, we don't know. We just don't know. But I think, I think we'll probably know sooner this year. Okay.
I agree. Thank you. I I, that's helpful to hear. And I think that, um, whenever you're ready for me to message stuff out or or when we need to start doing that, just let me know. But I want the, I want the directive to come from you and and the message to come from the board. The district, the parents know that they're, we're all in this together.
Yeah, and I think that once, once we start getting some of those answers, just start kind of honing in on that, on that direction. You know, I think that we'll kind of do what we've done in the past and really throw that information at Julia, who has so much free time. You know, and and we'll do that because I think that has worked, you know, pretty well. You know, Julia puts together some really good stuff, and then we can give input and, you know, get input from principals and and Wayne and Anne and everyone else, you know.
I just had a lightbulb moment.
Okay.
That might be a good public forum to have.
It could be, and I bet you we get some.
We didn't get a single suggestion, but everyone who voted would like.
Yeah, so that, so that. Yeah, it really is.
So just lightbulb.
Yeah. Hey, so I hope I'm not speaking out of turn.
Comment about the lightbulb moment.
All right, go, go ahead.
Be careful what you ask for. If you're gonna have a public forum and ask people's input, and then we are gonna be dictated either by the state or other mitigating factors on what the decision is, then you've asked these people to come to a forum and forum and put in their input. And then we don't have the ability to take that input and do anything with it.
That, that, that's a really good point.
But that, that's not, like I said, that doesn't, that, we won't, we want to present, we we want to listen to you. We want to hear what you have to say. And if our hands are tied, we're asking them for their opinions and their thoughts, and then we're ignoring them.
Right, right. Okay.
We could also make it known, though, that we would like their input going forward for the areas where we do have leniency and we can make decisions. But let it be known, the state, if the state says we have to do X, Y, and Z, our hands are tied. So then they go into it knowing they can say whatever they, not whatever they'd like, but they can voice opinion.
It could also be, it could, it could also be a discussion of the plan that we come up with with a Q and A.
Yeah, right.
So that's possible. So I don't know, I'm not sure if this is appropriate to ask enough, but I'm gonna ask it anyway because it's kind of what I do. So Karen, do you think that as these questions are coming into you, that you might be able to gauge an interest from the people you're talking to as to whether they would want to attend something like that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, at this point, can I gauge it?
Well, even as you're talking to them, like, moving forward, you know, something along the lines, along the lines of, well, you know, a- as the, as the board's getting information, coming up with a plan. Is that something that, you know, would you be interested in attending a Q and A, you know, if they, um, wanted to hold like that style forum?
Yeah, I I absolutely can do that. I I, at this point, I can tell you, most parents, uh, are very, very ready to say I want my children to be back and I want it to be safe. So I think, but as we move forward, there's a lot of questions, especially from our high school students that are really thinking about, can they, will they still be remote or not? So it's not just our parents. It's a lot of kids' voices that are coming into this, too. But yeah, I will pay more, uh, be attentive to that and and start sort of gathering information.
Cool. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
So the, you know, this emergency order eighty nine, the, all these, this list of questions, um, I just, just one thing that sparked from that. The very first question about three feet, um, I mean, it's not, we we really don't find that question because because we have room. But, um, I know I've heard some people asking it, and it came up at joint loss the other day about the three feet, if we were gonna change that. Um, because the C D C is still saying, you know, three feet was like, if if you're eating, you need to have a mask on. But then I I noticed looking through this, the state is kind of getting, was she washing her on that?
Yeah.
Which I don't like at all. Like, like you can be, according to. Like, you can be, according to the state, I can be right up next. Mask off and eating and use other mitigation. Well, what would that be? Taxi gas, I guess, but.
Right.
So I just wanted to ask that, that, I, I, I mean, my, my feeling is, is that even though three feet, when you're, you know, between desks, when you're not, when you, you still need to be masked and, you, you know, where you don't have to take your mask off to eat. I just wanted to see if we wanted, like, I don't wanna change it, but I know just cuz that question's been out there by some teachers. And like I said, it came up at joint loss, and somebody had said, well, let's see what the board does. So I felt, you know, I should bring it up, but, I mean, I don't think we should change what we're doing at all with the distancing. I don't know how you guys feel, but, you know, but.
I, I think the quality here is about, can you accommodate children in the room if you're not three feet? If you're six feet and we're doing it. And I like the six-foot rule because I've had less hands-on. I have, we had less, um, behavior issues because kids are poking, shoving, pushing. So I like that rule. It's been, it's been a constant, um, reminding process. I was gonna say nag, but, you know, I don't really nag. Um, but the, the kids, I think, need that consistent reinforcement. And when the governor first came out and said it, they were all telling me in school, we can be three feet. And I said.
Exactly, that's what I'm hearing too. I think, no.
School board decided, six feet, we're sticking with six feet.
Yeah.
So I like the six-foot rule.
Just have to say, there are some instances where four or five feet, and we, you know, we talked about.
And we, yeah, we knew that.
So we haven't changed anything relative to your, your expectation.
Jim, anything on that?
Uh, no.
Julia?
I'm good, thank you.
Um, I did have one question, so, but I don't know if, I think it might have been Holly who said something about when we go remote, that time may not count towards.
So, so that is, if we were to say, oh, we just wanna do remote.
Okay, so it's full-time.
It's different from the forty-eight hours we get.
Oh, yes.
Okay, I just, I was like, wait, so if we do two days, it doesn't count that we're gonna be?
If we were to do remote, starting, let's say, first part of May, uh, we would have to go to school in July or whatever.
Yeah.
We have to be done.
Yeah, I don't wanna do that.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that kinda.
Yeah, like, my understanding from reading is that if, if you're going remote for two days in response to a case or exposure or whatever, yeah, but this is if you're, just be like, okay, we're go, like, what? Some school in here, it said, one day a week, they wanna be remote. Uh, well, that's, no, that doesn't fly then, just, yeah.
Or if we did like the ten days, like the nurse one, it'd be like, yeah, no, you're gonna be.
Right, anything else on the COVID nineteen discussion? Uh, Joe?
Um, I just was hoping to be clear about the travel guidance that Department of Public Health and Human Services put out, uh, March sixteenth. It says that people that travel outside of New England don't need to quarantine for ten days any longer. And that's what we're gonna be following. We have some people that, you know, like you said, are on vacation and going outside. Okay, thank you.
Can we make our policy difference in this space in that regard?
I don't think it'd be, I don't.
I don't think we really can.
Back it up.
No.
There's nothing to back it up. Yeah, so if it was challenged, so i- if you.
We made a policy, we can't do anything.
If you, if you can't enforce it, why, you know, why do it?
I wasn't sure.
Right, and we've been very clear in all of our communications that we're following, the New Hampshire State and the CDC guidelines.
Yep, yep.
We can think it's, uh, but.
Can still suggest.
It's kinda scary, but.
Anything else for COVID nineteen? No, nothing. Julia, anything?
Nope, that's perfect, thank you.
All right, then moving on, we've got a first reading of policy JLCF, J I, J I C, J I C D. So I need a motion to accept those policies as a first reading.
I'll make the motion.
All right, it's motion in a second to accept that group of policies as a first reading. Any discussions?
I did have a question.
Sure.
Um, so for JLCF, on page four of nine, it talks about, let me look at what I'm pressing. So I wrote water and posters. So for the water, we have to have water offered. I think it's wherever meals are, like, delivered.
We have that at the high school. I'm not sure about the elementary, for the water fountain.
Yeah, I was, cuz I thought I was remembering something about us shutting them off.
No, they're, Sean Lee made special things, so they're all, uh, water bottle or cup accessible rather than being bubbles.
Perfect. Okay, cuz I knew we had shut off the drinking, the ones that, like, you used to use with your mouth.
Yeah.
So I was like, oh, can we comply with this? Okay, so Sean fixed that. And then, on page seven of nine, it talks about posters. So I just wanted to make sure we're making a policy work, complying. Okay. Okay, those are my only questions.
Yeah, the, the, I think we changed the poster. They have the harvest of the month. They have all kinds of.
And we don't have to have them in classrooms because that's where kids are eating. It's okay. Cuz the policy kinda made it sound like wherever kids are eating.
This one was done before COVID.
Okay.
And we had to get it to the wellness committee before we brought it to you. So this was from.
Prior to.
Yeah, so, but we'll be back tomorrow, so.
Anything else on, uh, those policies? All right, all those in favor of, of accepting that group of policies as first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Julia?
Yeah, I'm sorry, wasn't a lot of aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, so, um, any other business? Holly, you had some questions.
Um, yep, just because, you know, I, I missed a curriculum meeting. So, most of my questions, um, I know Sean had mentioned that I had some more questions that I didn't get typed up before I fell ill. But, um, most of them are actually answered, um, in the meeting. And other ones where Sean had said in the meeting were the hows. Who's gonna do stuff, which is tough, gonna be talked about later and decided, and CBA questions are answered later. But I do just have, uh, one that I wanted to ask about. So, um, in, in the report that, you know, we were, we were looking at about the summer professional development, um, it's mentioned that there's gonna be voluntary PD sessions over the summer. And if teachers, the teachers who complete those voluntary summer PD sessions will be eligible to be paid planning time to help them prepare for the beginning of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So, all teachers need to, this jumped out at me, because all teachers need to, uh, prepare for the beginning of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. But I don't, just don't like the idea of saying, the, we will pay the ones who came to the voluntary training over the summer to, to do what everybody else is doing, because there's so many reasons why people might not be able to come to voluntary training over the summer. They have second jobs, family situations, everyone's burnt out and just can't do it. So, I, that just kinda jumped out at me. Not, I don't wanna be negative, but, you know, that just jumped out at me, I just didn't think that was very fair to say, we're gonna pay you if you came over the summer, but the heck with you over here who has a second job or whatever. So, so I don't know if, when that comes up, if whoever can look at it can, you know, look at that.
I think that probably be part of that task force.
Yeah.
That could get.
Yeah.
Tricky too.
And, um, I also, so thank, thank, I wanted to thank Anne for getting that extra information to us. And, oh, and also, um, for pointing out, for Anne, again, again, to point out about, um, and like I said, this is real fresh in my mind, cuz I watched it today, so it would be fresh, about master's degrees. They talked about master's degrees, and, you know, I wanna thank Anne for pointing out just how many of our teachers ha- have them, or working towards them. And even if they aren't at that point, or, you know, don't want, don't have their masters, don't want their masters, you know, we have quite a few who are coach, trainers, coaches and all these other things too. So I just, just wanted to, um, you know, thank her for that information, cuz that's another thing that kinda jumped out at me.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that was it. Like I said, you guys, it was a, it was a really great meeting to watch. I'm, I'm really bummed that I was sick and missed it.
Jim, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, two things. Um, first thing is just, I know it appears in the packet, but, uh, congratulations to the girls' basketball team, um, as well as Coach Terry Binat, who I think is Coach of the Year, so. Congratulations there. Yeah, and, uh, also at last night's, uh, H E F meeting, John Harded wanted the board to at least consider participating in Memorial Day Parade, which we did a couple of years ago. So I thought maybe we could get that onto next month's agenda.
Okay.
Uh, and discuss, uh, that possibility.
Anne, can you put that on the agenda? Anything else?
No, that's it.
Um, Julie, do you have anything?
I'm good, thanks so much.
Kayla? Uh, the only thing I have, I know we've discussed, um, that we have, um, gotten all the donations, that we need to fund the electronic sign we've been talking about. And I just wanna make sure that we thank the efforts of Catherine Lynch, cuz she really, really went out of her way to, um, you know, reach out to a lot of different groups that gave us money. Um, you know, Hinsdale Economic Development Corporation, who, you know, made a really big donation. Um, also the Lions Club, Continental Cable, um, and anyone else that I'm missing. But I know those ones are at the top of my head, but who? Oh, yeah, Parks and Rec, you know, so town of Hinsdale, you know, really.
I, um, I actually was gonna bring this up in facilities, but, um, we thought that we should make a motion to, uh, approve the sign expenses. So we can wait for facilities, or since you brought it up, we could do that now, if what other chair prefers.
No, fuck you. If you do whatever you want.
Um, if you're okay, then I would, uh, make a motion, uh, that we approve the sign expenses.
And it's fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. We know of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and ten, and the other thousand, um, we had some missed budget. But I do believe, uh, that we have a few donations that we haven't listed. So I think we're actually gonna have the money to do that. It will be within the, uh, the two pillars, uh, the electronics in regards to anybody with the remote control. If we were to do it, it will dim, uh, at night, go off if we wanted at night.
Yeah, planning, planning boards are gonna want you to have some off-hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And thanks, you know, facilities people, the class of twenty-twenty and their eight thousand donation.
That is really what kicked it off.
That should be the first message.
Yes, it definitely should. That was fantastic. I will second that motion.
All right, I was just gonna ask for the second.
I was just gonna give it, yeah.
All right, uh, motion in a second. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, cool.
Do we get to do a fun, like, digital sign ribbon cutting?
Why don't we let facilities decide that? That way we don't have to, Anne?
I just, Sean, I need to know if I need to get on this month's agenda for the planning board, or if this is going to happen in May, so we can, you know, I mean, I, we need to have this approved by the planning board before we can go forward.
Right. So check with Catherine. We may or may not be too late for this month's planning board. Okay, so check with her. If she can put it on, we can put it on. Um, yeah, if not, just do it next month. I'm hesitant to do something like that, uh, uh, under other business. I think that needs to be an agenda item. Yeah.
I'm hesitant also.
Yeah.
Um, and the meeting is next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
So I don't know, we have, so this may have to be put off until May. Is what the installation may have to be put off until we can get through the planning board process. I just wanted everyone to be aware of that, so they don't think it's gonna happen overnight.
Right, so what would be helpful, so, yeah, check with Catherine.
Yeah.
Um, get on to the appropriate agenda. And, um, um, if, if you or someone from facilities can have an idea of when, cuz the discussion was, um, to use the noise ordinance as the timeframe for when the sign would be off. But it would need to be on sooner than when the noise ordinance would take place in the morning, would, would stop in the morning. So, um, I think like, you know, ten o'clock at night to turn it off is fine. But I think we need it on, you know, earlier than eight, because we're gonna need it like six. You know, but, um, what I would need to know at planning board is what time we would need to have it on.
Okay.
So the hours of operation, essentially. Okay?
I'll get all that, and I'll get all that information.
All right.
To Catherine as soon as, and I, I think it might be too late, but I'll ask.
Yeah, ask her. And text her while we're doing this?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know, cuz I, cuz I know that question will be asked, so if we can be prepared, um, then we can ask for the vote and hopefully not have anyone say we need more information or object or whatever.
Yeah, I think from what the first meeting.
The first meeting, the ma- the majority of the board is fine, yeah. Uh, but I know that question will be asked.
Yes, that's why I'm just, okay.
Okay. Blah, blah. Um, okay, so I don't have anything else. Does anybody else have anything else? Okay, Julia, you're good?
I'm good, thank you.
Did I? Did we vote? All right, so, um, so we have the motion in the second, um, to do what Jim wanted to do. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
We voted.
All right.
But we did.
Yeah, me, well, me too. I'm like, I'm like, okay, all right.
Sean, we already voted.
Did we already vote?
He did, yeah.
So we vote, we voted twice and reaffirmed that we.
So it's a ten-nothing vote.
All right, well, I guess better to vote twice than not at all, right? That's one positive way of looking at it. All right, so let's move on to the financial re, that's where I'm at, right? Yeah, the financial report. Is it?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank the board for, um, handling the public hearing and, uh, authorizing the withdrawal from the Building Maintenance Trust Fund. Uh, I will put together a letter and send that to the trustee of the trust fund requesting that withdrawal. Um, I also, um, thank the board for the conversation regarding the S R two money. Um, and in my report, um, I have a request for the board to, um, take action in regards to the copier expenditure. The board has two policies, um, that deal with the purchasing. Um, the policy DJE, um, is our general bidding requirements policy. And it has a threshold of fifty thousand dollars. Um, as noted in the S R two conversation, the replacement of nine copiers will exceed that dollar amount. Um, and since it's from federal funds that we anticipate making that purchase, um, I would like to ask the board to, um, waive policy DJE bidding requirements and to use the policy DAF dash three, which is related to procurement specific to use of federal funds. And that threshold is the federal threshold of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, obviously, this is, uh, we're talking about eighty-four thousand dollars roughly. Um, it's well below the threshold that would require a formal bid process. And we've already made steps to, um, seek out quotes from vendors, and we're, we're working on that. Uh, but I just wanted to formalize it so that it was in the minutes with a board motion, uh, particularly because this is a federal funds use issue. And I think it may come up when the, uh, use of the S R two money is looked at by the state.
Okay, so just to clarify that I wrote that down properly, you're looking to waive DJE and use DAF dash E?
Three.
Three. Thank you.
That's correct. And then, um, also, if I might ask the board to authorize me to, uh, enter into the negotiations, once we narrow this thing down, uh, to establish purchasing terms and, uh, enter into a purchase contract.
Okay.
And that's just for the copiers, right?
Yep, just for the copiers.
That's for nine replacement copiers. And this, uh, policy adjustment is only for that particular aspect of, uh, the use of the S R two money.
Is that two separate motions, or can we do that one motion, do you think?
I think you can do it in one motion.
Yeah, the way it's written sounds, what he requests, we could just turn into a motion.
Yeah, to, to wait, to, to, to do, you know, not use DJE, do DAF, and then authorize him to negotiate. All right, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
That's kinda why I wrote it and bolded it in.
And instead of request, same motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions in regards to the reports I've included.
All right, any questions for Tom? Anything? Julia, anything?
I'm good, thanks so much.
All right, no one has any questions, then, uh, we will thank Tom very much and move. All right. No one has any questions, then, uh, we will thank Tom very much and move on to curriculum.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Good evening. I see you on the EIA first on first committee. There have been some changes since this report was written. Last Thursday, I asked the committee members if it was interesting in slowing down and using next year to continue looking at the materials. Partly because teachers are tired. Partly because teachers were concerned about not being able to visit students. It's understandable we could do that next year. And, uh, having next year would give us more time to look at the materials and consider the options that would support all students. What looks like next year, that's the plan.
Cool.
Move it up. Beyond that, do you have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Kat?
Um, I just had a question about professional development. Are, is the committee, the profession, the PD committee going to meet? Because it sounds like there's a lot of talk around that and I never, I got on that committee at the end, like this time last year. So I haven't actually met or know really what even happens, but I feel like that's a committee that should probably be meeting with all this PV talk. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Having only had one meeting, I think in August, is, um, how do we even call that? How do we even call that for that committee?
So, uh, I don't know the membership of the committee, but it's the professional development master, it's a professional development committee. And they develop the professional development master plan, which is approved by the state and review it annually. But they also take up, you know, general, uh, direction shifts and so you probably want to meet with them quarterly, uh, would be my guess.
Yeah, we, we used to meet quarterly before COVID. I, I don't know if that was a requirement or that we just did it. I don't know.
I think it's in the master plan itself.
Okay.
I think that I, I believe.
That's what I'm remembering. Yeah.
I might have my committees mixed up because I just didn't have a few of them.
Yeah.
But, um, I believe we're supposed to be meeting quarterly. We always have to.
That's, that's, uh, when you say that about being in the master plan, I think that's where my brain was thinking, like, we had to meet quarterly. Um, yeah.
I think it's in there, colleague. I just, you know, like I said.
I, yeah, I agree with you. Yeah.
And Paul and I could schedule a meeting in May. Are you going to give May?
Yeah, whenever is convenient for you guys. I just wanted to kind of throw it out there that we should probably.
I agree. All right.
Okey dokey. Anything else for Kat? Did you have anything else?
Uh, no.
Holly? Jim?
No.
Julia?
Nope.
All right. Then we will let Kat off the hook for the rest of the evening. Or do you have something else?
My first one is say that I know anytime looking to schedule work over the summer. So if you're, you should use everything as soon as possible. That way that's the task part.
All right, cool. All right. So let's move on to technology.
Hello again.
Hi Deb.
Here's a positive about Zoom meetings. You can do homework while, while the meeting's going on. So I just wanted Jim to know that, um, the laptops that we purchased, um, recently are currently in stock with our vendor. And I did send an email to our vendor to see, uh, what their supply is like. Of course, that's today and two weeks from today. It may be different in a month today from today. But I can tell you right now, they have in stock what we're looking for. I just want to follow up with that. And that's the positive about being on Zoom. Um, I have my report before you, and if you have any questions about it, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Deb?
Yeah, Deborah, thank you for following up on that point, uh, from earlier. Um, I had a question regarding, um, the concept of the fifty dollar laptop sale.
Yes.
And I'm just wondering if, if accounting wise, this really involves Tom. Um, how would we set up the, you know, accepting those funds for those laptops? Would we have to have a special line item for that or something?
I can jump in on that. No, we don't need a special line item. Um, it would just be a collection of funds similar to, um, what we do now. We charge families, uh, for replacement cost on broken laptops. And, um, anything miscellaneous like that goes into account. Um, you'll see it on the revenue report. It's called other local revenue. So it's a general report.
Other, love it.
Local money, not state money, not federal money. It's in, it comes in revenue into the, uh, general fund and becomes part of the fund balance for the year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Holly, anything?
No.
Oh, Jim, sorry. Do you have anything else?
No, I, that was it.
Okay. Kayla?
Yeah, I was just going to say Kylie recalls you talking about that, Deb. So she's been asking. She's like, do I just get to keep my laptop? I said, no, we can't even print from home. You need to let them handle that. So the kids remember, and I think several are looking forward to doing that.
Yeah, I, I really like, um, the board's approval for that. Um, I did. It was an effort when we first started, um, with the whole one-to-one initiative. It was sort of the carrot that I was hanging so that the kids would take care of their devices. And the parents would encourage the kids to take care of their devices. So that at the end of four years, maybe you could purchase them. Um, so, and I did mention the fifty dollar piece. And as you could see in my report, I've done some research around that. And you're absolutely right, Kayla. You know, people hear what they want to hear. And the kids heard they're going to buy them for fifty dollars at the end of all this. And they didn't hear, maybe, they missed that. So, um, anyway, I, I've had some conversations, particularly with some seniors, and they were clearly under the impression they were going to be buying them. And I said, no, that hasn't been decided yet. So I would like your blessing for this so that, um, we can move forward. I did have, I, I waited because of the concern that Jim brought up earlier, um, as far as getting devices. And I don't want to leave our kids that will remain in the lurch. So, um.
That's going to be my question.
Uh, yeah, I, I didn't, I, I don't want to do that. Um, so I, I'm fairly confident that we're going to be okay. But, you know, it's, it's honestly a crap shoot.
Julia?
So as I understand, like, I, I don't know the whole, I know his plan has been going off here. So you offer these kids that have had their laptops for four years, they can buy them for fifty dollars. That's the plan, the possibility, right?
Sure.
Okay, so Kayla's daughter purchases her laptop for fifty dollars. Are we now, as a school district, providing her with another one for school years? Okay, so.
That's a great question. So here's how that would go, Julia. So the seniors obviously will, will be leaving. So it's those eighth graders that have had them for four years. So now they have a laptop that their family can use at their disposal at home, and they're going to get a new one. Laptop, uh, the lifespan of a laptop is typically two to three.
Oh, believe me, laptops and I do not like each other.
So.
I wish mine lasted four years.
Yeah, so, um, they, they'll have it. They will not be able to bring it back to school. What we will do is we will, wh- when we get them, get laptops or any equipment, we call, we refer to it as we Hinsdaleize it.
Yeah, no, and that's understood. My question is, you don't know how many families are going to buy into that, right? So as we prepare to place this order for equipment, that we're already concerned about, you know, the availability and whether or not we'll be able to get it at the beginning of the school year stuff. I'm a little concerned, like you mentioned, if, you know, if half the eighth grade class decides to purchase these laptops rather than us maintain ownership of them. And then we can't get replacements in time for the school to start next year. Now we've got half of the ninth grade class without a computer. That is my primary concern. That was, that was my question. Like, we can't really plan for that because we don't know how many are going to buy it, how many aren't. They might say they want to, but you know, there's kids. Have they actually gotten from mom and dad? Are we going to get the fifty dollars? Are they going to wait till after school? You know, it's, there's so many moving parts. And we're already concerned about being able to get the technology that we need to start the next school year. I love the idea of selling these and letting these families have it. I don't want it to be then, like I said, half the ninth grade class doesn't have laptops this year.
So how would you feel if, um, because what I was originally thinking about was that that they would be presented, we'd go with the 12th graders first because they were actually would be leaving. Um, and then I'd go, um, present it to eighth grade parents and families. And by then, I mean, this isn't really going to be happening until June. And I would hope by then I'd have a good picture about the S R money. You know, will our S R money be in hand by then so I can order the laptops?
If you don't order till June, we're not going to get them for the school year. I'm very concerned about waiting that long to place that order.
There's nothing I can, I, I don't think there's anything I can do, is there, Tom? Because I have to wait till we have the money in hand and they have to write the grant to get the money in hand. I, I, I may be wrong. Tom could speak to that.
Yeah, the, the normal course of events would be to write the grant on the state system, get the state to approve it. And then to, for me to take the approved grant and create the chart of accounts that's unique to that federal money. Because we have to track that money separately from everything else.
I understand.
So once I get that, uh, uh, grant written on the state system and approved by the state and get the chart of accounts created, I can then give you an account number from general ledger to issue a purchase order. Without an account number on general ledger, I can't issue a purchase order.
And those, and just, just to clarify, Julia, I think, I, I totally understand your concern. Um, these laptops that we're talking about for the S R grant aren't even for the fifth graders and ninth graders next year. That's in the twenty one, twenty two budget that the town hasn't even approved yet.
Yeah.
So I hear what you're saying. So maybe, you know, we have to wait, um, until, uh, I mean, I, you know, we have more S R money and I have, I've put in my dibs on the S R more S R money laptop. But you know, that's sixty days out for that one. So, yeah, I, it's, I mean, I can wait. I can certainly wait. I can say to people, we need to make sure we've taken care. And that's what I told the seniors. I've said, listen, I consider not doing it because I need to worry about the kids who are going to be here next year.
Right.
Um, so we might have to delay something. Um.
Well, the picture should be clearer by, you know, middle of June. That's still a couple of months from now. So.
But I think.
I misunderstood. I thought we voted to approve the funds earlier so that you could get these laptops on order like tomorrow. I didn't realize we, we can't do that. So we're going to be behind the eight ball perhaps.
But if I, I think if the board has a, a sense that this is the direction you want to go in and knowing that we don't want to leave any of our students that will be here in the fall in the lurch, then I think we have to, if you will give, go along with my judgment on that and that I wouldn't, I, that is my, my desire as well. I don't want any student to be without. So, um, until I have them in my hands, because you know, they told me they were coming.
Right.
Until I had them in my hands, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying to the kids, hey, give me your fifty dollars, here's your laptop.
Right. I agree.
Kayla?
Uh, so I just wanted to kind of throw it out there and ask, we do have the ARP money available in May. Is this something we could do to supply and demand and the need? And also like our technology plan, we're kind of, is being messed up because of COVID. Because our plan was they could, you know, hopefully buy them because we were just ordering new ones and they were going to have new laptops. But because of COVID and the increased demand for the entire school, could we use the ARP money?
So unfortunately, the ARP money will follow the, which is the S R three, follow the same plan as the S R two.
I thought we got.
The money will be available to us at the end of May, but we still have to go through the process that Tom spoke. Uh, but the quicker we get the direction, for example, what I'm going to do is give Karen Craig a call and hopefully Tom, you and I and Karen Craig on Monday morning after April break, put our heads together and keep moving on down the line as quickly as we can. But we still have to go through the process. The money is there in the state X for us, eight fifty seven. But we still have to do all of the things in order to get that P O and then we can order them. So hopefully it'll happen before June, but then the main, the money that the recovery act money will be in, will be sent or open to us the end of May. That's as long as the state could keep it. They can keep it up to sixty days. So they've already had it.
Ah, so they made a ton of money off interest.
Yeah, yeah. So there's no hurry there to get it out to us. So.
Interest rates aren't very good right now, so.
Well, off of millions, you still make good money.
So there's a lot of money in the state budget right now, uh, from recovery and the ARP money.
So, uh, could we make the motion, um, to approve Deb's plan? Um, and leave the start date for that plan up to her judgment? Could we do that? Does anybody want to do that?
I'll make that motion.
That was kind of where I was getting at. All right. So you have the motion. Uh, do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Deb, does that work for you?
It does, but I want, I, I'd like to just get a, um, a little bit of clarification on how the board feels about, um, the extra. So let's say everything goes as planned and we have some devices that the students don't want to purchase. Um, so they're there and we can use some of those mo- most definitely for spare, spare parts. How does the board feel about selling those extras that we may have to either staff or community members?
Thoughts?
I, I would ask Tom to weigh in on any accounting issues. Staff, no problem.
Yep.
The reason I bring up community members is because these are the people that are giving us the money through their taxes in order for us to do that. So I'm trying to be mindful of that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Tom, is there any accounting issues you can foresee with that?
No.
Is that what you were asking, Wayne?
I just want to make sure what's something I didn't know about.
Okay.
Um, you know, we're, because the, the plan is a big part of this issue.
Yep.
I didn't want it to be perceived that we're buying three hundred and seventy-five dollar laptops, getting really old ones.
Yeah, that's a perception of that.
If I'm good with it, I'm good with it.
Okay. Yeah, and I think that the plan that Deb laid out previous to this, kind of, like, like that's, it predates what we're talking about with the, with the grant money.
Right.
So I, I, I mean, I would argue that way.
Yeah.
But.
And I agree. I do, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'd have a harder time doing it with federal money. But this is, this is money that was raised through local taxes.
Right.
And that's why I bring it up because I just feel like the community's been so generous to try to keep us where we need to be in the twenty first century. And I just, you know, for some families, they could maybe afford a fifty buck thing. I don't know.
You know, I, I absolutely love the idea. I think it's fabulous. I heard kind of the back of my brain tickle a little bit when Wayne brought up the community, um, reaction to if these laptops are still fine and good, why are you buying new ones for the students? Why are we not using them until they're no longer fine and good? Um, that is a pushback that would not surprise me at all. Um, and something that we want to be very cognizant of because I can't see that people saying, well, wait a minute. If you're selling these for fifty bucks as perfectly good computers, why aren't students using them? So that is just kind of maybe something to think about.
Okay.
The, the perception. I love the idea that there are families that could use this computer for fifty dollars. We just, and I think we can do it. We just have to spin it well. Right? So when it comes time to do that, we just need to spin it well and put some pretty words on it and make sure that it's presented in a way that we're doing this fabulous thing for the community.
Sure. Sure. It was just an idea that I, I thought of. Sure, sure, it was just an idea that I I thought of and, you know. Uh, and and I I think, you know, it they would be the same as what we'd say to the kids, basically is, as is. You know, you can walk out this door and it dies and, oh, wow.
Right, right, hundred percent, I think it's a fabulous idea and I love it, I just think we have to present it carefully.
Yep, okay.
So is every, is everyone generally in favor of Deb accepting that as uh staff and community? And and letting Julia uh spin it and put the pretty words on it?
Yeah.
Jimmy, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, so he, so yeah, yeah, we're we're good with that.
And maybe, I don't, I I don't perceive this until the summertime anyway.
Right, right.
And maybe that's something we could work with Darlene Leonard too, she's down.
We have a new, there'll there'll be a new welfare person. So but but yeah, but that would be.
Okay, so whoever that person is, it might be a good resource to kind of connect with.
That office would be a good place to reach out to, yes. Yep.
Right, absolutely. Perfect.
All right, is there anything else for Deb or are you gonna let her off the hook?
Thank you, Deb, great job.
Thank Deb. All right, we've got principal reports and we are starting with our high school.
Thank you, Mr. Care, um, I've got a lot of information with end of year events on here and you totally noticed the progression as the calendar. Which is to get more and more like what we used to do. And so a lot of these will be outside kinds of things, like the Toga night and Chinese night. And I do have to say that the teachers, I don't know how you recognize greatness, but they've been fabulous this year. Every single teacher, when we've had students in classes, people come to you and say, hey, I'm free third period, I'll do this. Or I'm free seventh, I'll do that, so people really stepped up to the plate. Um, and you'll notice the trend, it we're down to about fourteen percent of our kids remote. So I think one thing that I've noticed and Karen may attest to this as well is that these conversations with folks over the phone, like, how are things going? I, you know, your child's not doing so well, what 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 are the options ahead of us? So um, there's a lot of encouragement for kids to think about, come back, come back to school. This is my best, so I think that's been helpful. I did have one parent tell me, oh, I want my child to do summer school this year remotely. And I said, I don't think we're gonna be able to do that, I don't have the staff to do that. That's not, that's not going to be an option that we, we have, so, no.
All right.
So I'll take any questions that you might have.
Does anyone have any questions for Ann?
Nope.
No?
Jim?
No.
And I don't either, well, you got up easy tonight.
Thank you, Ann, I appreciate it.
I'm just excited.
I'm trying to cover Spanish, but I'm not doing real, I'll learn just two words, chicas and chicos.
It's essentially the same word. You know, different gender, but the same, but the same, but the same word. Okay, wish I had more time, I'd step in and sub for you.
For you, yeah, okay.
Um, all right, Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first, I'd like to thank the school board on behalf of all the teachers and thank Mrs. Diario and Mrs. Leclerc for the uh bagels and coffee today. They they really appreciate that and love it. Yeah, but you guys, you did all the hard work. Yeah. So thank you very much on behalf of them, and you have my report and happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Joe?
Well, Karen, you covered so much.
You did, you really covered a lot ahead of time. Julia, anything for Joe?
No, looks great, thank you. Yeah, I think we've touched on so many things throughout the meeting that.
Definitely.
A lot of questions already answered.
Um, just the the section about um, remote learning where you say you have a concern uh over students being remote next year. And you you have your belief that unless the family has a medical note, all students should be back in person. I I'm not sure if um, if there's anything we can take action on that, right? Because it's really state-driven, correct?
Well, I think in that executive order eighty-nine, it it backs that up, in my opinion, I'm not a hundred, you know, I, there's a lot there, but I believe when I read the executive order.
Remote learning, it's.
If they have a medical reason, I think, I think so. I mean, we could check, you know, as it gets closer with mat or something if we want, but.
I haven't, I had, I have actually written down there, is there a legal uh opinion on that?
But I mean, we had discussed that we don't, that's kind of, I feel like what we were discussing earlier, right?
Yeah.
Like, we don't, we can't say for sure yet, but obviously, that's kind of the direction we're hoping to go in.
Right, that we're hoping to go into.
Right, that we're hoping, right, we can't really commit to anything at this point, obviously.
Yeah, I just wanted to make my, like to make my belief clear about the durability of it all.
Yeah, no, I mean, I.
And I understand parents wanting their kids to be safe, but I think it has to be on a, based on a medical issue.
Agreed.
Okay, anything, anything else? All right, we're ready to move on to uh the superintendent's report, we'll turn it over to Wayne.
Mr. Chair, you have my report, I think we've covered about everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
But I'm happy to answer any questions if there are other things.
Does anybody have questions for Wayne? Julia, anything?
Well, Seth, thanks so much.
Kayla?
Holly?
Jim?
I don't know.
All right, I think we're good.
Another one gets off the hook.
I know, right?
Because we already harassed everyone.
Kind of did. Um. All right, so let's do our committee reports, so uh personnel, I think we've done everyone, done everything. So um, health and wellness.
Yes, so there were two uh wellness meetings um conducted. Uh, the health fair that was discussed last year, uh, we'll begin planning it next year. Um, that health policy was in our packet tonight, we already uh discussed that. Um, and there is a grant opportunity that is in the works right now uh through the Keen uh Kits for Healthy Youth. And that's for.
Yeah, we got it, we got it today.
Okay, okay, so that's uh um, learning to cook, is that, is that what we're calling it?
I don't remember what it was called.
That's what I have in my notes, but I, that's what I have, anyway, so there's a, there's a, a grant that we just got in regards to that and that's gonna help us out.
All right.
There was a whole sustainability piece in it, they're gonna cook seasonal stuff and, yeah, but it is.
That's cool.
Yeah, it is, it is pretty, it's it's really a great idea as it was presented.
Awesome. Yeah, um, hey, Budget Committee?
Um, there, there's been some uh back and forth with questions that committee members have had and and Sean passed on those answers and the whole chain of everything that, you know, that he passed those along to the board. Um, Sean uh, I think, mentioned earlier briefly that he and and myself and Tom and Dennis and Ken met last Friday to answer some questions about uh, just questions they had about, you know, the pending legislation, the money we might get from that and the S or two money. So uh Dennis and the Budget Committee are trying to work out another meeting where Dennis wants to explain everything that happened at that meeting, so we're trying to work that out and we we Sean or I or Tom or whatever can attend, so just to get them all on. Like, because it's all very complicated so that everybody understands and we're in a a good place of understanding for district meetings, so.
So Holly, was that meeting productive and effective and you feel like they have a good understanding now?
Um, yes, I I think so, I could tell, tell them what they're agreeing.
I think Dennis and Ken do, it's um, it's, I think, and you correct me if you disagree, but I think it's uh, now, how do we take that information? Or how how do Ken and Dennis take that information and adequately um, explain it to the rest of the committee?
Yeah.
Do we need to have another like joint meeting?
Not another joint meeting between two.
No, that's, no, I I took copious notes, I just, it was last Friday afternoon and I I was on an extended lunch break, so I haven't had time to write them up. I'm gonna get them out to everybody who's at the meeting, um, you know, by the end of this week, so hopefully then. And then, you know, would whoever of us can make it to this other meeting that they're they're working out. So hopefully one of us is there, so when Dennis and Ken are relaying it, we can make sure it gets relayed correctly. Even, I mean, the notes will be all there too, but, no, I think so, I think it was a good meeting, um. You know, I think they really understand that we're not trying to pull anything over, which I think was what they were worried about when they see this big number.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so hopefully, you know, who knows what's gonna go down at district meeting, but I think we're moving to a good place.
You forward that email to Tom to see if he's available at that day and time.
Um.
But was he on it?
No.
I don't remember, okay.
I was barely on it, yeah, no, I'll, I'll do that.
Or we send it to him, or send him the information.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Uh, anything else on budget?
Nope, that's it.
All right, staff development.
So we are going to be meeting.
At the end of May, I think he said, right?
Yeah.
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 We're waiting, um, Kat and Holly will let us know.
Okay, cool. Um, legislation, A N H S B A.
Oh, I don't have anything, but I would defer to Holly if she has any additional N H S B A comments.
Yeah, I just have those two um webinars that I referenced earlier. Um, they're being sponsored by the New Hampshire Association for Supervision and Supre-, sorry, my mask all of a sudden got really tight. Their supervision and curriculum development. And they're they're calling them reentry and recovery, um, is like the title of it. And on May sixth, there's gonna be a webinar that's gonna focus on uh the experiences that people, you know, districts had reopening last fall, some reopen, like, when I say reopen, like, you know, I mean, coming back to in person and whatnot this spring, some some like that's where I saw. Some were this this spring and lessons learned. So um, the panelists on that one are like just various stakeholders, like administrators, people from the NEA New Hampshire, the New Hampshire PTA. And um, I'm gonna be a panelist on that one from the Board of Directors. And then the next one is actually the day after our May meeting, so we won't have the information for our May meeting, but. And that one's gonna be looking at what they need to do to go back in the fall that like as normally as possible. And that one, I'm not a panelist on that one, that one is like a panel of experts, like Commissioner Etta Blute, uh, John Broderick's gonna be on that one, uh, counselors, social workers. So it has, it looks like, based on the lineup, that it's also gonna be focusing on S E L and mental health. So watch for those, um, those are, like I said, on the sixth and the thirteenth and it's four PM to five thirty. So the N H, N H S B A is gonna be sending out links to that, so I think those will be really great ones, you know, to to watch. If you want, since uh, since the one on the thirteenth is a mental after our meeting, I could just talk to Barrett and see what he's kind of hearing. Out there, since I will have the information for our May meeting, so I'll touch base with Barrett.
Okay.
Um, the other thing um, is with the Board of Directors, so I've been asked to join the Executive Board. So at our May meeting, I'll take the position of Second Vice President of the N H S B A Board of Director, so. Yeah, so that'll be happening next month.
Awesome, great, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you, and that's all I have.
All right, emergency management, I don't think there's anything, uh, Wyndham Career Center. I don't think there's anything there either. Okay, um, TASP?
Uh, yes, we just met before this meeting. Um, Mary Ann went over sort of what the state is requiring and she'll be doing youth surveys. Um, they're, you know, of course redoing and stuff again, for requirements and all of that, like they seem to do to her every year. Um, she was talking about creating some policies and renewing the ones that are already in place. And she's trying to, of course, plan for summer and fall and kind of trying to gauge where our guidelines are going to be. Um, was it Mr. Hughes who did the maple syrup project and bike? Okay, Mr. Fields. Um, so they did a maple syrup project, that sounds pretty cool. For two weeks, they were tapping trees and they made a gallon of maple syrup, Mary Ann said it's very tasty.
I think they did that last year too, didn't they?
Did they?
I think, I think they did, yeah.
Sounded brand new to me. Um, we also have more bikes, so they were able to use bikes with a small group. And the police department also gave us helmets and stuff, so that is pretty cool. And she's just redoing goals and stuff, and the Cypress, am I saying that right? So that visit is going to be this year, because it was supposed to be last year and then.
Yes.
I think that's it.
All right, so uh selectmen. Um. So they're looking at, you know, what they're gonna do for town meeting and all that, they uh redid, they talked about their goals this week. Um, there was a request made that the school board uh do more of a presentation with our budget at town meeting. Um. I'm still a little unclear as far as what they mean, because we always kind of give a presentation. And it sounds like, and I talked with Tom about this on Friday, and when I, shall we say, reminded them of what we do, um, because I I I still believe that we do a presentation. Um. It kind of, I think, came down to, could Tom read that summary that he provides for everybody? So Tom's kind of said, um, okay. Which is kind of what I'm saying right now too, um, um, okay, yep, that can happen. Um, I don't see why it can't, so. Yeah, so town meeting will come around and I can give, I can kind of give the introduction based off of the report that I put into the uh, to the district, the annual district report. I can kind of summarize that. Um, and Tom can do that and then we can answer questions. I think, I think the intent behind it, um, and I kind of had to filter through a little bit of what was said to get to the intent, was I think that they're really just kind of trying to generate more of a discussion. Um, I think we can all pretty much agree that, you know, we have the lo- the larger budget and it passes quickly compared to the town with a smaller budget. And I really just think that they wanted more of a discussion. And I don't see a problem with that, so if Tom reading his summary works and generates that, then, great. Holly?
And and, you know, as Budget Committee rep, you know, I'm I'm up there on on the hook, so I'm I'm prepared for whatever, you know. I'll I'll put on whatever presentation, you know, whatever, we're we're.
Yeah.
We'll do it, we'll 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 jump through whatever hoop, you know, we're fine.
Yeah, I mean, I I I, I feel like in the past, whenever we've had anything that's been um, a little more in-depth than the usual, I think that we put forth the extra effort. I have always, I I have felt that way for seven years now. Um, so if we just need to talk a little bit more before we call the vote, then let's. All right.
Tom, reading his report is probably going to spur, I just, I'm a little nervous about the conversation this year.
That's, well, the conversation this year is gonna be rough either way. But I, I I think that what, um, this is my perspective, I think that what happens every single year is that there's a lot of misinformation that gets out there. And when we've had big things going on, like the building project, you know, we were really out there like a lot and we took the show on the road, as it were, and that's why we got the positive vote that we got, right? So we don't generally make that much of an effort, uh, as much as for the building project with, you know, regular budgets and stuff. But I guess the downside of that is then you have people who uh don't understand the budget, they just see, you know, a number and they start filling in the blanks as far as what the school is doing. And, you know, when that happens, that gets a life of its own and snowballs. And I think we did, I think we see that at some degree every single year, you know. So, you know, of course, there's gonna be some conversations, especially this year. Um, but I think that we can just have the conversations and see how it goes. Holly?
Well, and a couple of years ago, um, it was, I think, a year or two after the building project, we had a budget forum and very poorly attended, so it it, it, you know, we 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 put on a presentation, various points, we don't put on, and it it doesn't really change the conversation, it's, we are, they're gonna have, ask the questions they're gonna ask and, yeah.
Yeah, I think we had like three people come to the budget forum.
Well, three people that weren't like.
Staff, the one staffer involved in presentation, yeah.
So let's just say that conversation happened at the Select Board, I'm gonna leave it at that, um, Ann?
I I am worried about the fair educators.
Yeah.
He just got a job at Wendy's and he's gonna be making thirteen plus an hour and I thought, oh my gosh, that's gonna pay our fares.
Yeah.
And I think the 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 relative value that they bring to the district, fire out, lose, retain them. So I don't know how you could, in a presentation, say, hey, you know, here's, here's what you get for working Wendy's, here's what you get for working in stills at Air Educated.
Well, and Walmart is fifteen dollars an hour, but how do you say that and then not lose all your hair?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
So that's two dollars.
People don't really, you know, I didn't realize how much I was getting for this.
Yep.
I think there's thousands more people like me out there that don't know that.
But it's almost like, how do you put that out there and then?
Well, and we're gonna, and we're gonna have a couple of, um, at least one or two. Well, and we're and we're gonna have a couple of um at least one or two of the um support staff speak to the contract with us too. You know, so that was something we specifically talked about in negotiations. So hopefully that will help.
Afraid to put that light on it, because man, that's.
Well, we we would have to.
I know, it's just such a bummer, like for what we're expecting and asking.
Yep, it's true.
Pay does not compute.
Um, all right, facilities.
Facilities, well, uh thank you again for the vote on the digital side. Another meeting coming up this Friday, and um the only other. Item of note that I have is that Anne was uh was a solar company reached out to Anne. Uh who forwarded forwarded the information and the facilities committee will be looking at that. Maybe there'll be a solar energy project in the future.
Okay. Uh, community connections, as you know, Kayla and I kind of said earlier, we did put out the feeler, you know, to see if anyone was interested in the forum. Several people really liked the post and liked the idea of having one online. There were no suggestions whatsoever. For a topic, right, and so. If we develop something based on what you were talking about with Karen, that's great, but um you know, if you put it, I I don't I'm. I don't know about you guys, but I don't wanna put together something and have it just for us to talk to each other on Zoom. So until we have something to talk about, I would like to, you know.
Agreed.
And I think is that approach, and so especially, you know, that topic.
I think that topic, you know, closer to the date will be, at least get a couple of people, so. Uh, all right, uh behavioral support.
So we also met today. Trying to think highlights here. So they, both schools have met with Eric Mann two times, correct? And then tomorrow, Joe, is it just your building meeting tomorrow?
No, it's combined.
Okay, so combined, so everyone's meeting with him tomorrow also. Um counselors in the middle high school have gone around to all the advisories, right, to introduce themselves and kind of explain their role and. You know, so kids know where to go if they're having a problem and kind of just building relationships. Um there's. Both buildings are starting their day in a similar way, so we're getting that consistency between buildings. Uh language similarities, uh talking about regulation, but saying ready to learn. So there'll be that language consistency in both buildings. Um, I think, Joe, you're gonna talk to Eric, right, about the potential uh morning. Yes, so we can actually, they've been able to save a little money due to not having to travel. Uh Eric not having to travel to us, so we're kind of hoping to get a little more bang for our buck there. Um, yeah, so is there anything I missed, guys? There was a lot in the meeting.
I think that was a good overview of of the meeting. I thought you you spoke to all the points.
And oh, base also, S E L program. Um Katie Hires, the elementary school counselor, is talking to them about. Hopefully getting the program K to twelve. Uh so they're sort of discussing and negotiating all of that. And hoping to figure out assessment and tracking tools if we do decide to go in that direction.
Yeah, I just have one question, um and just because just just to get it straight in my mind, so. Each building has a their own committee, like building level committee, right, that that meets and met with Eric. And then there's a district level committee that you're talking about met today. Is there another level in between that?
So we're really just like the board connection, I think, with like, you know, they each come and kind of present their.
Like they have reps to you guys or something?
And I know you guys have had, you had it really large groups, and it's been kind of whittled down, because so many people were on. Too many committees, so that might be part of the confusion. I know the group dynamics did change, right?
In our building, the building level committee was very large.
Right.
What the um small group did that meets with Eric Mann regularly, went to them and said, here's our proposal. We want you to look at Choose Love, we'd like you to look at the base program, and our recommendations that this year will be some of the free resources, resources we choose love. And people agreed with that on the building level committee, so we did have, we haven't had a lot of meetings, it's just been.
So 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 there's the building level committee, and then there was this other smaller group that came out of that that met with Eric more.
Counselors met specifically to talk about.
So that was counselors that met, and then there's other, so the counselors and like teachers and various other people around the building level committee, and then counselors met with Eric.
Yes.
Okay.
Did the training through the advisory with all the teachers and then through the P L Cs.
But but I mean, the building level committee, though, was that we kind of approved the people on it or something, right?
Committees does exist in our building, but we haven't met a lot, but that's how we we focused on the information, so what are the resources, Erica? If you bring to our building level committee and you recommended those.
Okay.
Uh so joint joint loss.
Um, we met uh Monday, Tuesday, whatever day this week, um I can't remember. Must've been Monday, because today's only Wednesday. Uh we have a meeting on June seventh is our next meeting, and I apologize, I didn't bring my notes, so I don't know if Anne or Joe. I mean, you know, they reported out on accidents and talked about how distancing and mask wearing and, like Anne said, you know, reminders, reminders about mask wearing and. Um, yeah, so I don't think there was anything major that, yeah.
All right, Anne, do you want to go around, do citizens' comments?
Deb, do you have anything to add?
All set, thank you.
Tom, do you have anything to add?
I'm all set, thank you.
Teresa, do you have anything to add?
I'm good as well, thank you very much.
Sean, do you have anything?
I'm also, thank you.
Erica was on here, she texted me, she's having phone issues, and I just lost her, so. Oh, she had a question, and I don't. She wants to know if they um can ask last year's seniors to come to the prom.
The prom approved, the the what we approved was Hinsdale students, like students that are here now.
Okay, so that, I mean, she's just asking.
Yeah.
Just asking the question.
Yep, that's that's what we approved, that what was presented to us. So, yeah.
I I can speak to that just a little minute, um then I think since Erica can't be on. I know that after, I believe it was shortly after, um the board had heard the proposal. Then the advisors um were brought in and or or questioned by a few people and just said, you know, what about last year's seniors? They didn't get to have a prom. Um many of last year's seniors are still enrolled in college, they're still getting their COVID tests um done weekly. Um, many of them are going to be vaccinated at the time, so I think the question, and it looks like Erica just jumped on, so I'll let her speak more to it. But I think the question was just that, because it was thought of after the board met, and knowing that if it was to go in front of the board again next month, it was going to be too late. Um, so I think her initial question was just, had there been consideration or could there be consideration? Since we're not doing outside guests to give last year's seniors the opportunity, but Erica has jumped back on, so I'll let her, I'll let her finish.
Yeah, sorry, I kept losing service and losing connection, but. That was pretty much my question, was whether or not we could consider letting last year's seniors come to prom this year, and. Obviously, the next board meeting would be a little bit too late notice if uh we waited to make the decision next month, so I was just wondering if that would be considered. At this month's meeting.
Uh, so what's the date of prom again? I can't remember. Fifteen. All right, well, you know what, I'm gonna open up opinions to the board. What do you guys think? I don't care who starts. Jim?
I mean, I don't know, I think you could argue either way.
Yep.
How do building, like, people, how do you guys feel about it? So then Anne, do you have?
She's gonna have to enforce whatever we decide, so I don't. I don't, I don't, I don't blame you for abstaining, and I wish I could too. Julia, thoughts?
Nah, I don't have any at the moment, I'm still thinking.
Okay.
What does it do to our?
Worry about the numbers, how many people, that's the only, my concern is. Is how many people would that mean? How how much would that increase our numbers, and can we manage that in the safe way that we promised to do?
I can't recall where, where's Tom going to be? Do we know what, do we know what the capacity is?
We had it all last month, I don't.
Right, I don't.
So so and.
We need to know capacity, I think.
I kind of figured you you want to last and sum it up, so um. I I just think, you know, even though they are former Hinsdale students, they're still outside guests, and so I I would not be in favor of it, just because. You know, they're they're just outside guests, and I understand some of them are in college and getting COVID tested regularly, but. It will some colleges be done by then, and so I'm not sure what the end date is for some colleges. Some are done in May, but I just still think it's outside guests, and I think we should stick to our, what was presented to us. I don't, I don't. I think bringing it up in citizen comments and expecting us to make change what was presented doesn't change our plan. I I I would not be in favor of that.
And so we don't have time to wait for the next month?
That would not be enough time.
I think the timing works against us changing.
Yeah, I would like, I mean.
We could have gotten on the agenda, you know.
Can we figure out the capacity? I mean, if we.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't, we don't have time, we don't have the information.
Because it is a bummer for seniors. And it would be nice to be able to offer something like that, but I don't want to agree to it and then have an unsafe situation.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that the outside gathering right now, I'm not sure if it's accurate or not, but I I think it's a hundred, but I'm not sure, it it was not too long, like. There's no way we would reach a hundred guests at prom, even inviting last year's seniors, is my opinion, but.
Yeah, I I always have my previous month's packet, and I took it out because I had the big packet from curriculum. So I have it normally and I'm darn it, I took it out right before I left the house, because I had that other big packet. Oh, well.
I just thought I'd give it a try and ask for last year's seniors, because they did miss out on a lot, obviously, but um and try to see if they could come this year, but. They can't, they can't.
So is that where we're leaning, that we want to stay with the presentation or that the proposal that was given to us last month?
That's where I am, yes.
And Jim and Kayla?
I don't know. That's, it is tough, I don't know.
Julia, do you have an opinion yet?
I just, I I could, I I feel both sides of it. I am, I think the unfortunate issue here is the timing. If 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 it wasn't, prom wasn't before or immediately following our next meeting, get some more time to gather information, I. I think it's probably very feasible, based on the numbers historically, that it could be done safely. I think the timing to make that happen is unfortunate that we don't have it now.
I have a question about the presentation that was presented to us last month. The um it it sounded to me, and maybe I maybe I misunderstood, that like they had meetings about this, and every, all the students were on board with this when they brought it to us. So I mean, that's at least how it normally works, and that's how I thought it worked, so.
You know, I know that you guys did discuss this at the last board meeting, but those, you guys didn't discuss it publicly as far as what the protocols were for prom, you just voted it in. So I don't, we don't really know what the protocols are or.
So they didn't share it when they brought it to us, they didn't share it with the class?
Yeah, I I so I'm gonna, I'm kind of sitting back, I I feel like. I feel like if you guys discussed the prom protocols, now, yes, we have the protocols in front of us, we just voted to accept them. You know, so should they have been read into the minutes, probably, you know, can we insert the document into the minutes? That we probably could go back and do that. Um, but I feel like if you guys. All got together and discussed it, that yeah, you know what the protocols are.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we just approved what was presented.
Yeah, because the junior class pays for prom.
Okay, so the seniors didn't necessarily know. Okay.
But weren't weren't their seniors here? Like, there was two seniors that were here, right? No, didn't, did they leave before prom? Oh, okay, okay, I couldn't remember. I knew they were here for graduation, I couldn't remember. Okay.
Graduation was first and then.
Yeah.
Okay.
All online.
That makes it even.
Does it?
For me, it kind of does, so the seniors didn't, I mean, obviously, they could have found out, but I mean, if you're not.
So I'm gonna, Julia, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you kind of um are seeing their point, but you want more time, so. If you were pressed to decide right now, which kind of are. Are you to stay with the plan that was presented or to allow the seniors, the last year's seniors in?
I I my point was, I think unfortunately, based on the timing, it's too late in the game to try to change what, uh to 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 do the. Necessary um research to figure out whether or not it was doable or not.
So stay with the plan that we already approved. Yeah, that was interesting. So as it is right now, you have three board members that want to stay with the plan that was approved. So that's a majority right there, so. So right there, we're staying with the plan that was approved. Okay?
Oh.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Anyone else? Okay. Um, thank you, everybody. I know that was actually kind of a hard discussion.
That's very unfortunate that 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 it wasn't uh. Something that we could have made a a different decision on.
Yeah.
The fact that it came down to timing, if this had come up, uh and if our meeting was, it's just, it's unfortunate. I feel. Last year's seniors really, really lost a lot. They couldn't have a graduation, they couldn't have a prom, they couldn't have a class threat, so. You you know, and they gave us eight thousand dollars for an electric sign. I would have liked to have been able to offer them. This opportunity to participate in what is arguably. A very, very big deal to a high school senior that our class, that these kids lost out on last year. I would like, I would have liked to have been able to find a way to make that.
I agree. They they also could have gotten on the agenda and we could have had the the information.
I understand that you made that point, but it's it it um. Agenda, would you have changed your mind? Would you have felt any differently?
Well, no, uh maybe because we would have had information. I'm honestly, if we would have had information, but no, I totally under, I totally understand what you're saying, and I agree with, agree with you.
I just, I feel bad for the kids. A hundred percent, and a lot of them have been, they also lost out on their first year of college experience, because they're studying remotely and. Any little gesture that you can do to try to make it a little bit better for them, I just, I feel badly for them.
Yeah, I think we all do. I mean, you can't see us, but all of us look pretty sad. Or we saw eyes.
Um, all right, so that was everybody, Anne?
Yes.
All right, so I need a motion to go into non-public.
Right, I'll make a motion to go into non-public.
Right, motion in a second, going, now public roll call.
Yes.
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 So Julia, just give us a second to um isolate you.
Yeah, I'm gonna grab some water, I'll be right back.